Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, meeting, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could have Commissioner Hawkins lead us this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Michelle, can I have roll call, please?
Okay, Mark Johnson.
Here.
Britten Griffith Douglas.
Present.
Ed Hawkins.
Present.
Follow Levis.
Here.
John Marshall.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Move on to item three, this is public comment, and this item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment, and just a reminder, if you do have a comment to fill out a request to speak form, I do have one from Tammy Holt Still for this item.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, won't be seeing you before then, so Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record, and I was in front of this, the City Reno Council last week, and reported in on what had happened in your guys' commissioners' meeting, and suggested that they start assisting you with policy as far as the idea of a moratorium until your sewer plant issues are taken care of and your stormwater is taken care of for Swan Lake. At the time, I did not get any type of response, I'm hoping that you guys will receive some kind of response soon. I'm gonna keep pushing for it, because a moratorium is what's needed out there until that lake is under control. It's already come up, not only because of the storm, but also because of the waters that are going in from the sewer plant. So, at this time, we really need you guys to keep going with the way you're going. It was really nice to see what you did as far as holding off on the other project that was in front of you for Sky Vista, and hopefully the rest of the developers will understand the same. And as far as Prado, I understand it's looking at trying to come before you again, and that, again, is back under two feet of water, so, and starting to rise. So, building in a floodplain, so it can create a larger floodplain for the existing residents, shouldn't happen, and I think you guys know that, so, thank you, talk to you later.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comments, and we will move on down our agenda to item four, approval of minutes, and we have a set of minutes from November sixteenth, looking for a motion if there aren't any changes.
Commissioner Weiskie, still move.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye. Commissioner Griffith abstains from being absent for that meeting.
Thank you. So we will move on to item five, City Council Liaison Reports.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, I don't have anything on that, but if I could request that you move number nine, staff announcements to this spot, I would appreciate that.
Let's do that.
Okay, thank you, really quickly, at the last council meeting, the Lakewood Place Zone Change was approved with multiple comments from City Council that they will be looking at the project that comes in and are concerned about access and grading in that area, so when that comes back, we will remind you of that. The master plan was adopted by City Council, and then two days later, it was requested for reconsideration, so that will be coming January tenth to City Council to see if they want to reconsider the master plan. One issue regarding transportation, and the other regarding master plan and zoning consistency, and what properties may become non-conforming with their zoning and master plan. And then there was a discussion on the permanent overflow shelter, and City Council has directed staff to move forward on reviewing the two hundred and fifty Sage Street site for potential location for that, so you will probably see something coming forward with that, because in order to put a permanent shelter there, we would need a text amendment, so that would have to come before the Planning Commission at that time. Also, I would like to turn over to Janelle for just a moment.
Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer for the record. I just wanted to actually formally introduce two new Associate Civil Engineers in my department, and so I asked that Shawnee Donegan and Frank Peralta come up, and I am very happy to have two Associate Civil Engineers on my staff now, and they're helping out immensely, I know that you've seen Shawnee before you before, previously, but you'll start seeing their faces more often, and I wanted to formally introduce you to them, thanks.
Thank you. On behalf of all the commission, welcome, yeah, glad to have you.
Mr. Chair, can I have a question on the, for the Planning Director?
Sure.
I've been trying to review the, forgive me if I get the acronym wrong, the sheet that we get sent out that has the future projects that are coming forward, D R M?
The D R M, Development Review Memo.
Yes, and I, is there a way to highlight any of those that are in fact in the North Valleys area that have impacts on?
They all have the Ward listed on them, and there's a description of the location. I'll think about that.
Okay.
It's already on there in a couple ways, but I'll see if we can?
I, it was not, you know, I know the geography fairly well, but?
So anything Ward four?
Yep.
Or almost anything Ward four would be the key, and then, yeah, we can, we can look at identifying that more.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thanks Claudia. Let's move on then to item six, this is public hearings, and we will move down to item six point one, case number L D C eighteen dash zero 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 two seven, Longley Airway Industrial Special Use Permit Request, and I will turn it over to Andy for a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners for the record, Andy Drilling with Wood Rogers, representing Panatoni Development, the applicant for the Longley Airway Industrial Proposed Special Use Permit. This fifteen acre site is located on the southwest corner of Longley Lane and Airway. Just to give you kind of some wayfinding here, just to the south of this, if I use the mouse, this is the Charles Rivers Laboratory, there are some existing industrial and really a predominantly industrial area surrounding it to, to the north, south, east, and west. This parcel is zoned industrial commercial, as is the majority of the parcels around it. There is a small island of multifamily thirty, dwelling unit per acre zoning that is in the middle there. Just to kind of give you a little bit of history on this, that MF thirty, about two hundred acres, was previously zoned multifamily in this area, going back to the early nineties. In nineteen ninety-two, when this particular multifamily development was built, the Airport Authority, as it was being built, kind of raised their hand and said, whoa, 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 timeout. We have, this is in our flight path, this is right at the end of our runway, the majority of our planes take off in this location, we don't want additional residential in this area because it presents obviously some problems. Since now flat, fast forward twenty-five years, all of this area has obviously been rezoned to industrial commercial, and the reason that we're here tonight is because of non-residential adjacency to that existing residential. So the proposed project is a two hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot building, predominantly flex industrial, it has a large portion of office and showroom on the front on Longley, with warehousing type uses in the back, most of the spaces are on the smaller side, this isn't your big industrial warehouse, distribution center. We have four driveways, two on Quail Manor Court, and two on Longley Lane, approximately two hundred parking spaces, about eighty-six thousand square feet of landscaping is required, we're above and beyond that with about a hundred and eleven thousand square feet, and we have a six-foot tall wall with a two-foot berm for an eight-foot tall solid screening on the southwest portion of the site, as I'm pointing to here, between that existing residential and this proposed industrial. Just to give you an idea of the existing industrial that's built around it, large, mostly distribution centers that are around it, obviously Charles Rivers is a kind of a unique use to the south, excuse me, and just to give you an idea, we're proposing the six-foot tall solid wall with, on a two-foot berm for that eight-foot of screening, the existing, or the existing industrial to the north is screened by about a five-foot berm, as you can see in the picture there. Due to the residential adjacency, we did perform environmental noise assessment. Ballard Acoustical Consultants, Paul Ballard's here with me in case you have any questions, performed that study a couple months ago, they recommended the eight-foot solid barrier, we proposed it as a two-foot berm with a six-foot wall. The Reno Municipal, Reno Municipal, Reno Municipal Code, R M C, nighttime noise levels require forty-nine decibels, which are slightly exceeded by the truck traffic with this project. Do want to note, because this is in such close proximity to the airport and those airplanes taking off, the actual ambient noise levels in this area are currently actually much higher than that. This is in the seventy-decibel noise contour for the airport, and though that coincided with the measurements that Ballard measured onsite, it's in that seventy range, seventy-decibel range. So, there is actually an exemption in code for that, I have the section there quoted, eighteen twelve three oh four subsection F, where existing ambient noise levels already exceed the standards, the subject source may not increase the existing levels, and because we are much lower than that, we are not in fact increasing the existing levels that are generated by airport noise. So the proposed project is well below the existing maximum noise levels. That being said, the owner and Ballard confirmed, the owner of the multifamily, as well as Ballard Acoustical, who performed the noise studies for the multifamily going back twenty-some years, confirmed that those multifamily units actually have been mitigated for noise. They have, you know, triple pane windows, double doors, added insulation, things like that, to provide them with a greater level of noise abatement inside those units. Despite all of this, the applicant has agreed to comply with condition twelve that's in your staff report, which limits the activities, the nighttime activities, on the north side of the building, so we can limit the truck traffic at night to hopefully make it even a better situation for those residents. Just to give you an idea of kind of the architecture for the proposed buildings, again, it's kind of that flex industrial, so you'll notice on the elevation on the very top there, facing Longley Lane, a lot more glass than you typically see in a normal industrial building or warehouse building, again, because you get more of that office and showroom type uses up front. We are in agreement with staff's recommendations, I believe you received some modified conditions today. Those were requested by us, and per staff's memo, we are in agreement with those modified conditions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Great, thanks Andy. We will get back to you on the questions, let's hear from staff first. Brooke, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and Chairman, Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the record. Andy was, was pretty thorough about his presentation and covered many of the things that we had concerns of. The biggest concern is the residential adjacency. It is a senior living facility, so most of the residents are over fifty-five years old, and so that was also considered in, as we move forward with this. As you can see again, whoops, may I turn on the overhead shelf? I think a few of the things that Andy discussed are just the use, surrounding uses, there's very large industrial uses all the way around, and a wall was, is, is proposed, six-foot wall and a two-foot berm along that area. There is a break in that area, right here, which is the emergency exit for the residential, so it can't be walled, but they are providing extra landscape buffering will be provided along this area, and it's, so that is one area that can't be, excuse me, can't be walled. Some of the additional conditions that we applied to this project were no idling along the back there, they will provide signage, and there'll be no idling, worried about vibration, and that also comes down to refrigeration units will not be able to idle. In addition, there are additional lighting considerations, so that not just light glare, but the light itself is not a nuisance to the surrounding neighbors. And the lighting, lighting confirmed that there was at point five foot candles ends at the drives, and there's an additional twenty-five feet of landscaping plus the wall there, so we don't see any impacts from glare on the surrounding residents. Staff received seven written comments from the twelve twenty Ward, which was held last night. It was very close, last month's was canceled, so we did, we did get it before the Planning Commission, but only last night with Ward Two. One email has been received, that was received today, and I've had three phone calls from residents of that that had concerns or wanted more information about the project. With the recommended conditions, staff can make all the applicable findings and recommends approval of the requests. I am available for questions if needed.
Okay, thanks Brooke. This is a public hearing item, so we will get to public comment in a minute. Before we get there, I'm gonna ask the Commissioners for disclosures, and let's start with Commissioner Levis.
Commissioner Levis. Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site, received emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Griffith, I received an email, and that is all.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hawkins received an email and visited the site.
Commissioner Weiskie, I've ridden by that site many times, received emails, and also have spoken with the applicant's representative.
Thank you. At this time, I will open public comment, and I do have a request to speak form from Tyler Balance. Reminder, if you would like to make a comment, just to fill one of these out. Tyler, if you could just state your name for the record when you get to the microphone there, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, it's Tyler Balance, I'm a resident of Quail Manor Court, the development that's been there before all the other stuff was built around it. What I wanted to point out to you here was that we already have a noise problem with the adjacent two industrial facilities, you've got S K Food Group on one side of the community. This is a community of about a hundred and fifty people, it's fifty-five and over, I'm probably the youngest guy there, but the, I, I don't speak on behalf of all of them, I'm just speaking on behalf of myself today, but an awful lot of those people, they're on their last legs of life, they're terminal in many cases, some of them are gonna, you know, pass away in the next few years, that's the typical scenario for that type of property. So, I always try to step up to the plate and try to help, you know, with noise mitigation, with litter problems, crime, stuff like that, and so that's why I came to talk to you folks today. We've had really good cooperation with S K Food Group and Ames about repositioning trucks, not leaving them out near our property, because the, as was previously mentioned, sound's a problem, but it's really the frequency that's the problem. You can put up a forty-foot wall around that property, diesel engines vibrate at a very low frequency, and that soil, if you look at the geotechnical report, is very plastic soil, so as a consequence, a hundred yards from my house, my bed will jump up and down when a diesel truck is vibrating a hundred yards away, and it's, it's a sound channel in that plastic soil, and it's just something we have to deal with. The company that's developing this property, I think, is a very well-respected company, and I think we can reach some really good mitigation steps to make this all work, and it might work for the benefit of everybody concerned. I think it's a mistake to have these entranceways over here on the Quail Manor Court side, because you have vehicles exiting the driveway from S K and Ames, and it's rated at twenty-five miles per hour, but I can guarantee you that that's advisory as far as those truckers are concerned, they come flying out of there, and I've had a few close calls myself there. But the, to speak for the truckers, I think most of them are very considerate of the local people, and as soon as they realize about the sound issues, they reposition. We've gotten an agreement with the Ames facility, so that the trucks, even though they're going to S K, if they show up early, they can stay at the Ames facility's long-term parking area, which is over on Airway Boulevard. Relative to this property, I'd like the Planning Commission to consider the idea of letting a variance to the, I guess this is the Longley side. On the Longley side, they're only allowed one entranceway for trucks. If they had an allowance for two, that was at closer to the Airway and Longley intersection, that would allow the trucks to be set up into a circular pattern where they wouldn't have to go against one another back there. And I see my time's expired, so the key point is, is that there's this low-frequency vibration issue, and if the staging area is kept at the far end down by Airway, so that if any trucks show up early, that they're told to stage in that area, and keep them as far away from the residential section, that will be a great benefit to the local residents, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, thanks Tyler. Anyone else wishing to make a comment on this item before I close public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to the Commission at this point and ask for questions. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, I'll start with Andy, quick question for you. You mentioned the, I guess the site plan or the landscape plan would be the best to look at, I'm looking at the, sort of the noise situation at that area. Can you tell me what the width of that landscaping is between the Court, Quail Manor Court and your parking area?
So we're generally talking, I think about that area, sorry, Andy Drilling for the record, twenty-five feet, that's twenty-five feet wide.
Okay, and so, from what I could tell, and I was a little confused, there's a berm with a fence, but I think from the drawing, the fence is all the way at the, I guess, the west edge of that berm?
So we, we need to maintain an eight-foot tall solid screen, so it will be a two-foot berm with a six-foot wall on top of the berm.
Okay, so, I guess?
Generally down the middle.
That eight, eight-foot, I guess is the question, that was the recommendation from the acoustic design, that's not a condition at this point?
Correct.
Okay. So then, I guess, one of the things that I wanted to ask about, when I visited the site and when I looked at it, I think one of the benefits there to the adjacent property is, I mean, there's a, there's a huge landscape barrier essentially between them and Longley, and they've done the same thing to the north. The berm is, is taller, it's heavily planted, and there's no fence over the top of it. Has there been consideration to looking at something along those lines? Or is that, are you concerned from an acoustic standpoint, with a taller berm and denser planting at that point?
Sure, so we need to, we, yeah, so from an acoustical standpoint, and I can defer to Mr. Ballard if you'd like, but it needs to be solid, landscaping alone does not, it provides visual screening, but not acoustical screening, so it will not provide the necessary mitigation for the noise that would be required.
Okay.
Adding to that, code requires a six-foot tall solid wall standard between residential and industrial, so that's kind of there, and then we added the additional two-foot berm in order to get the totally eight-foot of screen, both from a visual and acoustical standpoint.
So, but the land, the plan then from the landscaping standpoint is that there would be landscaping on both sides of that fence?
Yeah, I believe we could do that.
Okay. And then the second comment while we're on landscaping, I saw this on comments from the NAB, and also noticed it on the site there, the sidewalk along Longley, both the Charles River and the east side of Longley have a sidewalk that actually has a planting strip between the road and the sidewalk, and I didn't see that on yours in terms of what you're looking at. Based on the area that you have on the east side, is that potential to move the sidewalk in? Whether it's meandering or not, I'll defer to the design, but at least to ensure that there's planting between the sidewalk and the curb.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
And then, last question, because you put a nice architectural picture up there, and I couldn't let it go. And I don't know if Michelle can bring that image back up, or if you have it, I just had a question, because the elevation didn't quite match the plan with respect to a couple of the notes that you had for what appeared to be panels out in front that are metal clad, can you maybe clue me in as to how that sits? Because all I'm seeing on the, the plan is some, some dashlines for the soffits.
Sure, so you're referring to kind of these popouts, these additional popouts, yeah, the metal clad popouts, so those are just not, they kind of got lost in the scale of the, of the site plan, but those would be included.
And how, what's the standoff from the building?
I do not know that.
Okay, and just, because I know we're looking at articulation, and because we're, we're putting a pretty long facade along Longley, which all of the other elements, all the other buildings that are on Longley that are a large scale, don't have this much frontage on Longley. So I am concerned that, that elevation, even with what we're doing, is very flat. I know it meets the articulation standards, but I'm concerned that if those panels are only set off a foot or so from the tilt up behind it, that it's not gonna achieve what we're looking for. So, just wanted to, to understand if there's some, obviously preliminary design at this point, but is the intent to have those relatively close to the building mainly as a non-structural accent?
To be honest, I don't know, we don't have the architect with us tonight, the applicant is here, and I believe they would note that comment from you for consideration with, you know, the final design.
Okay. Thank you, and then I have one question for Brooke, if I still have the floor.
You sure do.
I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in on the architectural conversation. Come on.
I don't think anyone has the level of expertise.
I don't know if I do, actually, quick question though for Brooke, thank you. The, the comments from our public comment this evening, as well as some of the conditions in here, are talking about maybe some hours of operation facing the residential. Are you aware of any specific requirements that are on the adjacent projects with respect to hours of operation for the doors that are facing the multifamily development?
Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the record, I have, I am not aware of any other stipulations that are on the surrounding units. I know from speaking with, with the public that they have had issues, but they've found ways to resolve those issues with different car traffic and truck traffic in those areas.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Weiskie.
Thank you. Janelle, please. Regarding traffic and sound and idling, don't we have a regulation through Washoe County air quality that does not allow for truck idling at any time of the day?
Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer for the record, yes, that is correct.
Okay. I don't remember seeing a condition for the building to be signed as to no idling, as we have done in the past with residential adjacency, did I miss that? I did? Okay, if it's in there, fine, that's great.
I think there is a condition, hold on. Well, condition, condition twelve.
I, I see condition number twelve is a, a condition of not allowing trucks to use the docks, but I don't remember seeing it for signage, that there's no truck idling.
Condition number nine, I believe, is the one that is being referenced.
Oh, you got it, okay, perfect, thank you, thank you, I'm glad I missed it, and it's there. The other issue, Janelle, that I have is the deceleration lane on Longley Lane to the south entrance. Is that deceleration lane sufficient in size to accommodate a commercial truck and trailer combination slowing down from a speed of forty-five miles an hour to make that turn?
I believe that it is, I may defer to Gabe Whitler, I'm not sure if he was involved in that particular design.
Andy, then I'll, I'll bring Andy back up, please, and I'll, Andy, if you'll address that question or your, one of your engineers, please.
Sure, I'll defer to the engineer, it's about a hundred and sixty-foot taper length on that.
Okay.
Gabe Whitler, Odyssey Engineering.
Thanks, Gabe.
This is kind of a blow up of the, the-
This is kind of a blow-up of the driveway in question here. I'd thrown a full-size semi onto the taper there to give you an idea of the scale of what it might, what it might look like.
So, that when the truck is fully in the lane, it will be out on and off of Longley Lane?
Correct. Yeah, this line that you see here would be the edge of the travel lane, so that by the time it reaches the curb return to enter the driveway, the trailer would be fully out of the travel lane itself. It's a hundred-and-eighty-foot taper, starts at zero and tapers down to a full lane width by the time you enter the curb return.
Okay. Do we have an acceleration lane for vehicles leaving that south entrance? Or is it not going to be, is it not going to allow truck traffic to exit the business?
There is not a proposed acceleration lane. We're a bit constrained. Truck and Meadows Water Authority has a lift station right here with their, the way that their access is set up currently, it doesn't allow us to make a full acceleration lane within the right way.
So, is it, is it a reasonable expectation for a truck and trailer to pull out onto a forty-five mile-an-hour roadway from zero miles an hour?
Well, based on many of the other intersections along Longley, let's see if I've got it-
The ones farther north.
Yeah. Many of the older areas, and I guess it's, the scale's probably not going to show us either. But there are multiple similar commercial driveways along Longley in the same condition and have just a normal curb return. In fact, some of the discussions during the staff applicant review meeting during this process was requested that we didn't have any XL/DC lanes, just typical standard straight curb return access. So, with the addition of the left turn pocket, and we felt it was safer to include the DC L, obviously, because they're slowing down in the travel lane to make the turn.
Thank you, Gabe. I appreciate it. I have no further questions, but I have comments when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, one more quick question for Andy. On the west side of the project, just the site plan will work again. I've got that. Somebody's got it. I just want, the two driveways that are indicated to come in off of Quail Meadows Court there, does that, southernmost one, does that align with the current driveway into the adjacent project?
Yep. So, that one there aligns with the existing. It's a little difficult to see that, because we dashed the existing, but yeah, that is the existing. And then, this area right here is that berm that was in the photo in my presentation.
And that was why I was asking the size of ours, because the one that's proposed, because that one seems significantly larger.
Sure.
And then, I guess, while we're doing that, and maybe to piggyback on to Commissioner Wieske's conversation, has there been an analysis from the applicant in terms of the anticipated truck access to this facility? Obviously, there's quite a bit that comes down Quail Court now. Do they, is that anticipated, or are they, they may not know, but is there an anticipation coming from, certainly from the airport, you would be hitting Quail Court prior to Longley?
Yes.
In terms of the number of trucks entering the site?
Yeah. So, a couple of things to that. So, yes, both entrances on Quail Manor Court are planned to accommodate for truck traffic, as well as the southernmost driveway on Longley Lane. The traffic report had very minimal traffic on the Longley Lane. It was only like eight or nine vehicles in the peak hour making that movement. So, we anticipate, you know, kind of a, they should be dispersed through the site. They should be able to kind of ingress and egress at various locations, because, you know, it's a busy intersection at Longley and airway. And so, the more opportunities we give them to get in and out is a benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
Just before I go, to-
Do you have an answer on my first question?
Yeah. So, did a little research quickly. So, this actually shows it a little better, and again, it's, the scale is very small, but we do show the pop-outs a little bit better on this exhibit, and we estimate those to be around four feet. So, it would have a little bit more relief than you were anticipating.
And that's what the soffit there that you've got over the glazing is connected to?
Yep.
And does that, based on the shading, does that extend out beyond the-
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you following up for me on that one. No further questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any one more question to follow up on what Commissioner Wieske was asking earlier of the engineer regarding the acceleration out of that southern driveway there? It was discussed in the staff report, the significance of the southeast connector in alleviating some of the traffic and level of service concerns for that intersection, Longley and airway and double R there. Does that same logic flow through to the area south of the intersection, once that southeast connector's in place, that will experience less traffic south of that intersection?
Yeah, I think safe to say. And this portion of Longley Lane south of airway definitely sees a decrease in traffic. You know, the portion between airway and Virginia, basically, is a lot less trips than the portion north of airway. And that, yeah, we anticipate that a lot of that traffic will get bled off into the new southeast connector. I know for me personally, that will be my new commute route, so.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. Other questions for applicant-staff discussion? Commissioner Wieske, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I'd like to make a comment on is kind of piggyback on Commissioner Johnson's concern for entrance and egress on that, off of Longley Lane. I see, you know, pulling into a business a little bit different than pulling into a street that then feeds businesses, as we noted, or was shown by Gabe to us with the industrial area to the north of this proposed complex. This is a distribution-based building, I would say, especially since it's very similar to the other Panatoni projects that are distribution-based. So, I would expect to see truck traffic more than a one-story, small flex space with a lot of more private vehicle access, ingress and egress from it. So, and my concern and discussion with Andy this morning was exactly that of, you know, trying to get trucks off of Longley Lane as quickly as possible, get them out of the forty-five, fifty-mile-an-hour traffic flow, slow down quickly, and then get them into this business. So, that's a concern that I have, and trucks coming back out of it, not as much of a concern, but, you know, that's a concern also that I have. With a left-turn-pocket lane on Longley to go into this business for northbound traffic, I would like to see a condition of having that southbound, or that south ingress/egress be made, you know, right turn, right in, right out only from the property and be signed that way, so that there isn't trucks trying to get all the way across Longley Lane. And, Janelle, if I've misunderstood what's going on, and it can't happen that way, please correct me.
No, that's actually a reasonable expectation or recommendation. And what I will add also to the conversation is that for those trucks that are exiting the site and going right, I believe that because of the signalization at airway and Longley, that you will have those gaps in the traffic volumes, so that will allow the trucks to make that maneuver in a more safe manner without that acceleration lane there. I think that that would be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. That was one of the concerns I had. Another concern that Commissioner Johnson brought up was, based upon the NAB comments that we received tonight, I read them before the meeting started. I'm not so concerned with the meandering sidewalk, as Commissioner Johnson stated, but a sidewalk that is back off of Longley Lane with a small landscape buffer between it and forty-five, fifty-mile-an-hour traffic, I think is a reasonable request of the developer for this project to create safer pedestrian area. Again, Janelle, you got something to add? Please do.
Yeah. Janelle Thomas, senior engineer for the record. What I was going to add is that this is a major arterial, so the Longley Lane frontage would require, per our standards, an offset sidewalk. And that would be a six-foot sidewalk that is separated from the curb and gutter, as a standard.
What's the distance between the curb and gutter to the sidewalk, then? Because that's not what their drawing shows.
It has to be a minimum of five feet.
Okay. Okay. So, the drawing that's up on the screen right now, although it's just a rendering, I'll give credit for a rendering at this point, does not depict exactly where the sidewalk will be, so it will be moved back and create that safe pedestrian walkway?
That is correct. When it comes in for its building permit, that would be one of the criteria that we would be looking at.
Okay. Is that something that you think we should condition, or it's just there?
No. It's a standard. I would recommend that we probably not condition that.
Okay.
I can jump in. You have condition number one on all of your special use permits.
That covers-
That says that there's conflict between the code and the proposal, that the code prevails.
Perfect. Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, I'm going to piggyback on Commissioner Wieske. I agree with the right-in, right-out at Longley Lane. I was considering, when I was looking at the site, whether or not that was even an appropriate truck entrance. But there is a concern, actually, coming south from Longley, trying to turn right onto airway and then immediately get over and make a left. That's an almost impossible maneuver three-quarters of the day. So, having the ability to turn in from the right, your right-hand in on Longley, I would definitely support that. The second thing I wanted to mention, in terms of the findings, and that was the reason for the question to Andy on the berm and some of the conversation we heard tonight, I think that the most challenging one I had on this one was looking at condition F, which is the one that talks about dust, vibrations, fumes, all of those items that are always problematic when we're looking at an adjacency between industrial and residential. I'm comforted by the fact that there are some existing buildings out there that are doing the same thing. I'm also comforted by what I heard from public comment tonight about willingness to work and identify areas. There's a large amount of the site that's still north of the adjacency, and I think the developer has heard the concerns and being able to put something in place for those early arrivals, later arrivals. So, that, what I've heard tonight, combined with the conditions that are in place, I am going to be able to make that finding. So, with that, I'm feeling much more comfortable with this.
Commissioner Johnson, you mentioned the architecture of the frontage along Longley, and I really appreciated that comment and how you brought that into the discussion. And I'm looking at Finding E, which talks about the architecture and design, and I'm going to defer to you, because you are the architect. Are you feeling comfortable with what was presented by the applicant?
I appreciate, the short answer is yes. I think one of the things that I appreciated probably more than I commented on was the fact that the recommendation for some metal panels, it's a material break. Too often, these large buildings address that with paint color. And to me, that's not really the spirit of what we're asking for here. So, by pulling those out, which is going to create a shadow line, it's going to create a material difference, by connecting it with the horizontal elements for the louvers, and then just the fact that you're going to break up those concrete panels with a lot of glazing, it's not, you know, you're still looking at a two-story warehouse facade, but short of making the articulation significantly deeper on the project, I'm comfortable with what they're presenting and do not have a problem making Finding E.
Thank you. That closes the loop for me on that one. Commissioner Wieske?
Mr. Chairman, if nobody else has anything, I would like to add to my, or add to the discussion the recommended revised conditions and maybe review them very quickly, if you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Since staff and the applicant are okay with the revisions to condition twelve and fifteen, I'm just going to leave those as is. Condition number six, there is, the applicant would like a revision to an RT, Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority condition that staff is not in agreement with, and that, you know, goes back to federal regulations. And when certain things applied, are applied, I'm not sure what the timeframes are, but in the past, we have always had that condition as provided by the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority, and I would suggest that we leave it that way. That's just my opinion. And condition number fourteen, having concrete tilt-up experience in my professional background, I thought five weeks was pretty aggressive when I saw this. I was pretty impressed by that. I was waiting to watch it from the sidelines. Eight weeks is quite reasonable. So, I would not be opposed to the eight weeks.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks for walking through those. Any feedback on those from the other commissioners on those four proposed condition changes? Comfortable with them? Okay. Well, if there isn't any other discussion, I'd certainly entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I will make a motion. In the case of LDC 18-00027, Longley Airway Industrial, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, including the revised conditions twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, as indicated in the latest community development memorandum. And based on what Janelle said, we don't have any other changes that I'm aware of. So, with that, and as mentioned previously, I can make all of the findings.
Commissioner Johnson, are you going to, did we make a condition out of the right-in, right-out?
Thank you for bringing that up. And Commissioner Wieske was getting ready to jump in on that. Yes, I would like to add that condition, that the south entrance on Longley be signed right-in, right-out for truck traffic.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on that subject. So, just to be clear, you're talking about the south entrance here. Just want to point out, that's an existing full-movement intersection. There's an existing, this would be a southbound left-turn pocket. So, it kind of creates an awkward situation where we can't then go in and create a right-in, right-out for the people across the street. Our recommendation, obviously, is, per our plan, that there would be a left-turn pocket for the northbound. It was supported by our traffic study, and just hope that you reconsider that additional condition.
Maybe we can hear from the engineer on that one. Janelle, can you weigh in on that?
Janelle Thomas, senior civil engineer for the record. So, I guess I was, I was thinking about the other intersection. You know what? Can I take a moment just to look at an overhead of that area real quick?
Sure. Commissioner Johnson, to clarify, you're talking about that southern-
I am, in keeping with Commissioner Wieske's discussion, and perhaps the concern that I have, which I share with Commissioner Wieske, is truck traffic turning, probably more than anything else, the left-hand turn out, I think is the greatest concern that I have there.
Yeah. So, the, that does tie directly into Innovation Drive across the street, and that is a, that is an existing full-movement intersection at this point. Are you asking that the, are you asking that possibly the median island be extended northbound so that the through and left-turn movements are not- so that the through and left-turn movements are not possible for the truck traffic exiting the site?
I think that's the, the concern is the truck traffic exiting the site.
Trying to make left-turn movements to go northbound?
Correct. So I guess my question, if it's a full intersection, currently it's a T-intersection, is the driveway that's being proposed on, as a part of this project, the same width that would make it a four-way intersection?
It appears that it is very similar, if not matching, that geometry across the street. I would, I would probably want to examine the traffic movements at that intersection a little bit further before we place that condition on this particular driveway.
So, are you recommending that we not condition it and leave it to staff discretion upon additional review?
Correct. I would say that this is something that we would examine at the building permit stage, that we would pay particular attention to this driveway location.
Is there some language that we can state, or is this discussion sufficient to ensure that there's perhaps some additional traffic analysis done of that as a part of the building permit supplemental? I just, I understand what the applicant is saying. I just want to make sure that it doesn't get out of this body without our concerns being addressed.
So, might I suggest that we use a condition that additional analysis of this intersection be examined prior to finalization of the building permit to determine that the full movement meets the safety guidelines, something to that effect?
I'm okay with that, if staff is okay with the language. And I, I don't anticipate, I can't see Andy to see if the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wiskey, do you want to weigh in?
Yes. I can't make Finding D if it's not a right-in and right-out, and I will be voting against the project or vote for a continuation for another meeting, and staff can have time to review it with the traffic engineer. But I think this is, this is not, this is a private access. This is not a street. It's not going to become a full-blown intersection. It is a private street. It's not a public roadway. If there's a truck that needs to head north, they're going to go out, quail Manor Drive, and go up to Neil Road, I think it is, north, and then get on Longley and go north. So, I, I just wanted to share that before we go too much farther. And that's just my opinion.
Mr. Marshall, why don't you weigh in real quick?
Since this is a private drive, could it not be signed in such a way that it would prohibit trucks from turning left? And allow other left-hand turn actions, just not trucks? Now that's, I don't know if that...
I would, I would suggest that signage definitely is not very effective. And so, a more permanent solution would be advised. The applicant has indicated that they are fine with the, with adding a condition for a right-in, right-out configuration. And I can, I can develop that language. We've, we've developed a condition on a recent project, I believe, in the same body, under that same issue.
So, Janelle, for clarification, it's a right-in, right-out configuration, which could include a number of strategies to make sure that happens?
Right. Yeah, generally, signage doesn't apply to certain components of the driving public.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, with...
Mr. Wiskey?
If, if we just condition right-in and right-out, and part of that condition is to leave it to staff's recommendation of final design, then I, I think that we have done our job, and engineering can do their job afterwards and make sure that it's a, a safe right-in and right-out for everybody.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, you were going somewhere with a motion with that language. Is that, are we headed in the right direction with the motion?
Yes, so, so basically, the, the motion as stated in the last part was that the condition, and I appreciate Janelle's clarification, a condition that requires right-in and right-out for truck traffic at the south access point to this project. And I will leave, I will defer the specific language and the development of that to staff and engineering discretion. And with that, I can make the findings.
Okay. Have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Johnson will say vehicle traffic instead of truck traffic in his motion, I will second the motion. For the, for the right-in, right-out.
I guess...
That way, it leaves staff the overall ability to use anything in their means to design a safe intersection.
As long as your concern is, is that it's opening it up to allow staff determination, because I don't believe that, I think that's where it needs to go to and not be prohibiting everything. So, yes, I can change that to vehicular right-in and right-out.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, I second the motion, and I can make all of the findings.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any...
I did, I included the amended conditions prior to opening up the can of worms that was the last condition.
Right. Think we got it. Have a motion and a second? I've got also kind of hands jumping up and down here. I'm ready to get this done. What?
Gabe Whitler, Health Engineering, excuse me. I, I just want to clarify, we're already, this, this condition you're proposing in conflict with Condition 8, which is based on staff's review of the, the traffic report, which is conditioning the addition of the, the left-in here. If I could propose, it's, it's pretty simple to make it... Some kind of modified island that would force a right-out to, to restrict the left-out, which I agree is, is probably the most dangerous movement of this. But I just, before you add another condition in conflict of an existing one, I just wanted to, to bring that to your attention.
Commissioner Johnson? This, Commissioner Wiskey speaking. I, I don't disagree with that. The island, I, I think if staff is in agreement with it, that that's reasonable. I, I don't want to take the left-turn lane away from them.
Commissioner Johnson, based on, I don't see anything in this comment that changes what my motion would be. So, I'm leaving it up to staff to develop this. Staff is the one that has issued that condition that's in there, and I don't see...
And we're not taking away Condition Number 8.
We're talking about vehicular traffic for the modification, so Condition 8 would not have to be modified. And we would leave the right-out, right-in, subject to engineering review.
Yeah, so, what I might suggest, knowing that this condition is in here, we would add to that condition the additional language, which would clarify that it would also only allow a right-out without the left-out.
If that, if that works for you, then all of the discussion about the added conditions can be rolled into Condition 8.
I believe so.
And I am...
We can modify that one to make it work for everybody's benefit.
Understood.
Okay.
So just for my clarification, the only movement that we're talking about limiting is the left-out?
Correct.
Okay. Why don't we just say that?
Okay. I would like to modify, as a part of my motion, Condition 8 to address concern about vehicular left-out movement from the southbound access point and request that that be reviewed by staff as a part of, as a part of the condition.
Okay.
And I can second, Commissioner Wiskey, I can second that motion with that amendment to Condition Number 8.
Okay.
And still make all the findings.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good discussion, everyone. Moving on to item 7.1, which is a text amendment, 18-Quadruple-01 Adult Businesses. I believe that Claudia is making her way to the podium for a presentation, so we'll get started when she gets there. Actually, we're not going to start with Claudia. We're going to start this item with public comment and disclosures. So, for item 7.1, I'm going to ask the commission right now for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I did not ride my bike to any of these clubs, but I am familiar with all of their locations.
Thank you.
I received an email on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins, as does I.
Commissioner Griffith, as did I, and I did speak with Attorney Work this afternoon for briefly in person.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower, I received email correspondence?
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures?
Commissioner Levis, I received email.
Okay.
Chair Gower. Hi. Over here. Hello. So, we received this binder today. It was dropped off by a courier. It includes two letters to the planning manager and a series of complaints, and they are requesting planning commission delay any action until complaints are resolved. We did not have time to distribute. There was only one copy, so we will make it part of the public record.
Okay. Mr. Marshall? Michelle, can you pass that down, so Commissioner Marshall can see? Any other disclosures? At this point... I'm going to open public comment, and just a reminder, if you have a comment, fill out the request to speak form. And the first request to speak form I have is from Deidra. And just a reminder, say your name when you get there, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes. Good evening, people, and my name is Deidra, for the record. And I have worked in the adult entertainment industry here in Reno for a very long time. I've done this to support my broadcasting career, so I always had, I would like to say, two not-real jobs. And this is why I do not believe that the clubs should be moved out of the downtown area. I do understand that there have been some issues here and there and stuff, and for the most part, what I've seen is a lot of issues have been resolved in the clubs. I don't, I've never really had much of a problem in all my years or anything. And right now, we definitely, it's pretty safe to say that we live in a very interesting time of anything to do with adulting, as it were. So, my opinion of why you should not move the clubs from the downtown area is, one, Nevada has always been known for its casinos and such like that. And regardless of where you move the strip clubs to, there is a soiree of ladies of the evening that work in the downtown area that probably are not going to move their business out into the industrial areas with us. So, something else to think about is when it comes to the predatory or anything that shouldn't be going on, as it were, it's going to go on more out in the areas where there are darker lots, not so patrolled by police and such like that. I think that what we need to do is work a little bit more on maybe tightening regulations here and there and cleaning them up a little bit, and just keeping them in the downtown area to keep them safe, to keep them patrolled. Because like I said, Stop Sign Sally isn't going to go out and be in the industrial section to conduct her business. She's going to stay in the downtown area. And regardless of whether we like it or not, people, people who travel here for entertainment, vacations, whatever, they seek out adult entertainment. We used to be the fluffers, and then we set the ball out to the brothels. And that actually worked really, really well. And things got a little bit loose as far as regulations and stuff, and, well, they have been since tightened up. Also, when it comes to the whole point of pulling the liquor licenses, you guys have got to explain to me how taking alcohol out of the clubs, putting younger clients in the clubs, and requiring me to be topless on the bottom is going to make the strip club area a safer place to be. So, I, I just, I'm, I'm not for the moving of the clubs out into the industrial sections. So, that's, and I just think that it would be smarter and wiser to keep everybody here in town and under supervision. So therefore, there is no predatory, anything horrible going on. And I would like to thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Next card I have is from Mark Thierman, followed by Mike Kaczmierski.
Good evening. My name is Mark Thierman. I represent the Wild Orchid, Fantasy Girls, and the Spice Club, who have been in their present locations for over 20 years each. Now, there's some dangerous precedent going on in those proposed regulations. And I know this is probably not the city council, and you're not concerned with First Amendment issues so much, but let me talk about 14th Amendment, taking of property without due process. As you may or may not have read, the Chamber of Commerce came out in favor of the clubs. Why? Not because the Chamber of Commerce is in favor of strip clubs, but because what this regulation does or attempts to do is to take their property in ongoing, non-conforming, lawful use and take it away from them. The theory is wrong, because they're not going to move their own, those properties are owned 100% by the Kaczmeris. There's no other better use for them. So if you take away their liquor license, they're not going to move. They're just going to go, uh, follow totally nude, and they're going to go 18 and up instead of 21 and up. They may, Kaczmeris may or may not open up clubs in these other areas. But more importantly is you're going to have an incredibly bad reputation and a bunch of lawsuits for about $50 million, which is probably the present value of all the clubs. And if that lawsuit has a 10% chance of success, and I give it a far better chance than that, this city is going to go bankrupt, because somebody thinks it's better to move clubs out to the suburbs than it is to have them in downtown. People go downtown for adult entertainment. They don't want to go to the suburbs for adult entertainment, and people who live in the suburbs don't want clubs next to them. The, the one on Telegraph is closer to a school than any of the clubs here that are downtown. You don't want to move the clubs out to an area where people raise their children, or they have, they go to the gymnastics thing, they go to the supposedly industrial area, but it's not really industrial. There are all kinds of stuff going on there at night. It's bad zoning, it's bad planning. There was a recent report done by the city attorney's office, and what it conclusively proved was the closer the clubs are to the downtown tourist market, which is what their First Amendment audience is, that is the best for the clubs, the cleanest operating clubs are where the people make the most money, where the tourists are. Now, my client's going to come up and tell you some, some pictures of, of, of some trees that we're going to put up there, because someone suggested maybe the trees would help soften the effect of the clubs on the downtown. We're willing to work with Midtown. We have the sign that's been pretty much Midtownified or gentrified, showing what's going on in Midtown. We opened the parking lot for the Christmas rush downtown to Midtown. We're doing everything a good neighbor ought to do, and you will scare away every developer who wants to open up a business or every business who wants to move there by telling them, you can do something for 20 years, because we wake up one day in the, in the middle of the night and decide, well, we don't think that's very nice. We don't think we approve of that form of entertainment. Then we're going to move it, or we're going to shut it down. The taking of, obviously, the liquor license is, is the key to the operation of the club. Taking away that liquor license is a taking of property. The idea of going without liquor means you go down to 18 years and up, because there's no real First Amendment prohibition about 18-year-olds versus 21-year-olds. I want to borrow from my, my clients if I could on the time.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up there with your three minutes.
Then let me, let me say this one thing. This is, I sent you the, the, all the litigation that's going on. This is the tip of the iceberg. This is something that the city, it's not good for the city, it's not good social planning. And Claudia Hansen stood up here before the city council and said Ed's Knockout was, which was a, a club that wanted to come into town, that the clubs actually serve a good purpose in that they keep bad districts well-lit and well-policed and are actually good for the, because we have the lowest crime rate in the district of any of the businesses around us. So with that, I'll say that there's no good planning reason for you to vote in favor of these regulations.
Thank you. Mike Kaczmierski, followed by Jamie Kaczmary.
Planning Commission members, Mike Kaczmierski, President, CEO of EDO and Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. Personally, I want to thank you for all you do for our community, it certainly is, you know, 7:15 now, most people are at home, and you're here working hard, so thank you for that. My comments are in support of the staff recommendation, there is a place for everything, and in our living room in our downtown is not the place for strip clubs. The staff recommendation is rightly based on secondary impacts. People could dispute that, but you can ask yourself, why is the Wells Fargo building next to the Wild Orchid still vacant in part, and at ridiculously rental rates when it's in the center of our financial district? Why did the Starbucks across the street move just a year ago? So, you may, the city has a lot of great data on secondary impacts, but common sense prevails. I mean, who wants to have business operating next to a strip club? And all the activities that go along with it. The staff did an excellent job, have reviewed their information, I'm sure you have it as well, in detailing court support, Supreme Court support, Supreme Court support, say that three times, in the, in their arguments, and I'm not going to get into much detail, they've done a great job in that, my comments are really from an economic development perspective. Our job is to grow the economy, make this a better place for all our families, for our next generation, a place where we can live and grow, and I can tell you the number one reason I hear from a company that they're not excited about Reno as our downtown. And what we're doing in our downtown is to keep the strip clubs in a nonconforming status just reinforces the fact that we don't really care that we have a downtown that is, is not very attractive to our families, to our young adults, to, to the kinds of tech companies we're trying to attract to this region, to the university students that we want to have in a vibrant college-town environment. So, this is a very important message to not only our community, but to our businesses that are, we are making a step to really improve our downtowns and make it a place where everyone can enjoy. The image is incredibly important, and, and we really need a welcoming downtown, our downtown needs to welcome everyone, not just those people that like strip clubs. And strip clubs aside, whether you use them, don't use them, like them, don't like them, legal, illegal, whatever, there's a place for them, and our downtown is not a place for them. And a pretty obvious example is Las Vegas, which is Sin City, says, strip clubs are not in our downtown. They require, like we do, oh by the way, they need to be in industrial areas, and all we're asking is that we, we enforce our existing code requirements, and that the nonconforming facilities move to a place that they'll be very successful, as they are in Vegas and many other communities, just not in the middle of our downtown. So, I would just close by saying, this is an important issue when we talk about the new Reno and the direction where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Kaczmary, followed by Kimberly Moll, please.
Hello, I'm Jamie Kaczmary. I'm one of the co-owners of the Wild Orchid Fantasy Girls and Spice House. Well, I'm not going to get into all the other stuff that you're going to hear today, because you're going to hear it over and over and over, you know, this bad move, whatever. All I know is that, I can show you that, we've talked to a bunch of council members, part of the problem is that they want to clean up an image and so forth, and you know, you know, what we'll try to do is, we're trying to help out and see what we can do, and we've decided is, we have like, and I can show you, it won't fit on the thing, is that we've wanted to put trees up there, you know, maybe the people that aren't interested in going into the strip clubs will put trees in there, that way, you know, it's our attempt to do, as I disagree with the last guy, you know, it's our attempt to, to show that, you know, we're not trying to attract people that aren't interested in coming, and we have been there for 20 years, and, so we'll do our best to, you know, make this a little bit more easygoing, and a bunch of the council members have expressed, you know, the tree situation, so we have that. I can show this around if you'd like, do you guys want to see that, or?
Jamie, maybe you can just hold it up for us.
Right here? Let's see.
That'll work.
Yeah, see, so what we're trying to do is, you know, hide some of the things and show that, you know, the club, you know, the people that are going by and so forth don't see the club and stuff like that, and again, we have two other clubs that aren't even close to downtown, I don't really know how this ordinance affects them, but, but let's just stick to the Wild Orchid, since that seems to be the major issue and stuff like that. So we're going to do the best that we can, you know, we can, we've changed signage, like you said, we've done the best we've can to change signage, so that, you know, less and less people even really know what's going on over there, so, other than that, I think that's all I have to say. Any questions?
We'll get back to you if we do.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Moll, followed by William Mantle, please.
My name is Kimberly Moll, I moved to Reno, I'm a little over a year ago, from Texas, and now I work as a legislative advocate for sexual assault victims and domestic violence victims out of the state legislature. I'm also survivor of domestic minor sex trafficking, and I will be the first person to say that I don't think there's anything wrong inherently with strip clubs, I have lots of friends that have worked through them and got themselves in better situations, however, I've had lots of friends that have been exploited through them as well. And I wasn't going to speak, but I heard the gentleman that was representing several of the clubs made one comment, he said, you know, the best thing for the clubs is for them to stay downtown, which I completely agree with, that is the best thing for them, probably, however, it's probably, it was not the best thing for the young people and the youth that you'll have in those areas, and let me explain why. When you come from a background of either being exploited as a child, or from a background where you've been sexually abused, or harassed, or just have food insecurity, socioeconomic difficulties growing up, or become a single mother very young, when you live in an area like Midtown or Downtown, and several people do, I personally was looking at moving to Midtown, it's kind of the young hubbub area right now for, for the 20s and 30-year-olds. But when you move into those areas and you come into financial hardships, when you have places like these facilities that are right there outside your door, when you're trying to figure out how to feed your child and your single mother, or you're a college student and you have to figure out how to pay your rent that month, when something is that close to you, it's very easy to make the decision to put yourself in a situation that you're not either ready or comfortable with, and these are how people get exploited in there. There are people that have great careers in these institutions, however, it's not for everybody, and I think you've seen through some of the reports here that was done, I think kind of undercover-like, that there are people that take advantage of those in the situations there on a very regular basis. And so, by moving it out of the inner-city environment, moving it away from the homeless youth population that visit like the Eddie, moving it away from the young adult population, you're moving it, it might not be best for the strip clubs, but it is best for the people in those areas, because they're not going to be tempted, they're not going to be, you know, those things that maybe they wouldn't normally do, to, just to make means of survival in those instances. You know, that doesn't mean they're not going to still go across town to the industrial area if they want to, but that's on them. Your job and your position at that point is making sure it's not in front of them on a daily basis, making sure it's not easily accessible to them, and not something that's just right there in their eyes going, this is an easy way out, this is an easy way to put food on your table, because reality is, it's not easy. If you've ever been in that environment, and I have, it's not an easy lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to approach this issue academically, I consider myself, oh, I'm William Mantle, sorry. I like to approach this academically, as I consider myself a bit of a criminal justice scholar, I got my bachelor and master's at UNR for criminal justice, and went off to University of Nebraska Omaha to pursue a PhD in criminology, and my main concern is with the secondary negative effects doctrine being used to justify this movement, I don't see that there's a valid argument to say that the crime that could be generated by these institutions is somehow worse, or far more exacerbating than what the casinos, or the pawn shops, or other things within this, these areas can also create. We're saying that the crime generated potentially by these places is bad, but is it worse than others? And reviewing the documentation that I was able to get from the attorney's office, I saw that at least one thing was certain, that congregating these strip clubs, or adult businesses in general, in one area, if anything, makes whatever criminal effect it has, worse. So if the plan is to remove them from the areas where they are, which is at least somewhat dispersed, and to congregate them within an industrial area, which, as was stated earlier, probably lacks the amount of public services and patrol routes or access to emergency services as quickly and easily, may exacerbate any issues that could exist. Essentially, I'm just really concerned that we might, or the motions here before you today are considered for reasons that aren't justifiable, and I haven't seen an academic really recount of why this is a good idea in terms of stopping crime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was the last request to speak form that I have, if anyone else would like to make a public comment. Now is the time? If you could state your name for the record, please.
My name's Louis Test, and I'm here representing the men's club, and I'm going to echo what has been said before, and I'm not going to repeat it. The men's club's been here for over 20 years, and there hasn't been any of the proliferation that the secondary effects are basically talking about. The men's club has no problem with the signage amendments, just to let you know that, we don't have a problem, but the idea of taking away a person's business and a right that's been there for over 25 years, as was explained earlier, is what the major concern is that we have now, and that's a legal issue that may have to be discussed with the city attorney's office as we move forward with this, but we, we just feel that the secondary effects that are being alleged here are not there. Legally, you argue the law if you have the law on your side. If you have the facts on your side, you argue the facts, and the facts will demonstrate that over 20 years, there hasn't been this proliferation, or the problems that have been exploited, or had been pointed out by the surveys that have absolutely no effect on the city of Reno, so please consider that. We haven't caused a problem in the downtown area, we aren't on a main street, but we're going to be eliminated in five years according to this. The other concern my clients have is, the elimination of alcohol is not going to stop people from drinking before they come onto the premises, nor drinking after they leave the premises. So the elimination of alcohol that exacerbates the, the situation that they're talking about is not going to be eliminated by saying you can't sell alcohol in the club, because people are going to be drinking it before they come into the club, or they're going to be trying to sneak it in in flasks and so forth, and pour it into the, into the juices that will be served by the different clubs, so please consider that. We haven't caused a problem in a number of years, we're grandfathered in, and I do have a question, in the ordinance it indicates that if a club is nonconforming, they have to be removed in five years. What occurs if a nonconformant, if one of the criteria that is set forth in the location changes because a school or some other type of operation moves in? Does that mean then that the non, that the conforming use then becomes nonconforming, and then they're going to have to relocate that? And either close it down or relocate it within the five-year period? And, and I don't see anything that if we move out into an industrial area, another use comes in that is prohibited, that would prevent the city from saying you can no longer operate, you have to close down within five years. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could just turn in your request to speak form to Michelle, I appreciate that. Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and turn it over at this point to Claudia Hansen for a presentation.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. Tonight before you is the proposed adult business ordinance, as directed by city council. I'm going to start off with a, with a little introduction here, and I think my presentation covers a lot of the comments and should clarify some of the issues that have come up tonight. Matthew Jensen is with me tonight to cover quite a bit of the legal points of the ordinance and surrounding court cases that have, that have built a lot of our, our ordinance to the point where it is today. Also with me tonight is our representatives from the police department and code enforcement, if you have any questions about ongoing inspections that have been happening, they can address those questions. On second, there was some discussion on secondary effects, freedom of speech and expression protects First Amendment-related businesses only, and this is unique for, for First Amendment businesses. So that is billboards, you're all very familiar with our billboard ordinances, tattoo parlors, adult business operations, all of those are protected under the First Amendment. Secondary effects, however, is a doctrine specifically originates from landis and zoning regulated on, regulations on adult businesses. So there was a question, or a statement from one of the last speakers, that mentioned that he doesn't see the correlation on, why secondary effects just on adult businesses, not on bars or casinos or anything else. Secondary effects is a doctrine specifically on adult businesses, it doesn't relate to any other business, or any other business type, it is solely on adult businesses, and Matthew Jensen is going to get into that a little bit more. Just as I mentioned, it does not relate to bars, casinos, tattoo parlors, marijuana establishments, only adult businesses. So a little history on how we got here, in 2015, city council directed staff to review existing adult business related, business-related ordinances, review the existing secondary effects studies related to adult businesses, and to hold a series of public workshops and meetings regarding the number and location of adult businesses and related establishments. In 2016, starting in 2016, we had a number of local policy initiatives, Reimagine Reno, the master plan amendment, I know you are all extremely familiar with that one, a number of issues came out of that, looking for higher values, safety, affordability, well-maintained, attractive downtown, they want downtown to be cleaner and more attractive, people have a strong dislike for the downtown area, find it embarrassing to take out out-of-town guests there, need to get it cleaned up and more usable for guests and locals. Statements such as downtown is such an eyesore for anyone looking to move to Reno was a common comment that we heard, I know you saw those public comments as we went through the reimagine Reno process. We also had a strategic plan completed in 2016, or revised in 2016, looking for a vibrant university town, outdoor activities, special events, arts and culture, innovative industries. The priorities that came out of that for the city were thriving downtown and university district, vibrant neighborhoods and public places, well-managed growth, strong financial condition, and efficient, dependable business environment. We also had the downtown action plan, that established through public feedback, the vision for downtown to be safe, clean, vibrant, walkable, and fun. Actions necessary to achieve the vision, redevelop blighted vacant properties, improve the safety of downtown, restore historic buildings, make downtown more walkable and bikeable. And then again, in the ULI corridor study, recommendation that came out of that was, if possible, relocate the Wild Orchid to another site off Virginia Street, so again, not asking them to go out of business, but to move off of Virginia Street, and then redevelop the site as a mixed-use property in the short term, enforce the sign ordinance requirements on the property. So really reoccurring themes that we have seen over the last couple of years, to really clean up the downtown, make it more tourist-friendly, more family-friendly, encourage youth and, and families to come back into the downtown. In 2016, Reno city council received an update on the ordinance, we addressed the current locations of adult businesses, all of which are nonconforming, other than one, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Allowable, adult businesses are currently allowed in the industrial zone, and not with special use permit, if they meet the spacing criteria, they can move in with a building permit and a business license. Business licenses for alcohol are a privileged license. Secondary effects, we also presented to city council and addressed the Secondary effects, we also presented to City Council, and addressed the, through the proposed regulations, the alcohol signs and location issues, and I'm gonna get the, into those in more detail as we move along through this presentation. City Council did direct staff to move forward on wording to eliminate alcohol at nonconforming locations within two years. That two years, we kind of bounced back and forth over the last couple of years, between six months and two years, the last direction from Council was two years. And to do that, we also received direction to separate the issuance of an alcohol license and adult interactive cabaret license, so before, it was one license, when the business owner would come in and apply for that, it was an adult business with alcohol sales, I think it was something to that effect. So there was no way to remove the alcohol, and so we realized, looking at that, in a, in a broader spectrum, that we really need to look at those as two different things. Alcohol sales is one issue, adult businesses are completely different, and should be regulated separately, so we have moved forward and separated those licenses. No difference in the, in the fee on the license, that did not change at all, we just divided them between those two uses. They also asked that we enhance regulation of exterior signs and displays at all adult businesses, and most important, they wanted to conduct outreach with stakeholders and the public prior to returning to City Council for seeking further direction. So, public outreach. Twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we had our, twenty sixteen, we had our first stakeholder meeting, it was in this room, the room was full, we had quite a bit of comment, provided the draft proposed adult business code revisions, similar to what you have before you, there have been some significant changes on key issues, but for the most part, the concepts were still in there. We received feedback from the adult business stakeholders, employees, and general public attendees at the meeting, I would say at that stakeholder meeting, it was close unanimously in opposition to the ordinance. Through public outreach, May and June of 2017, we went to all the neighborhood advisory boards, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Regional Alliance for Downtown. The NABs all supported the proposed ordinance with some concerns from wards three and four, because that's where most, if not all, of our industrial zoning is located, and so they see that as all of them being pushed to three and four, where they aren't located now. Chamber of Commerce initially did not have, did not vote on the item during the presentation, and then they came back and did have a number of concerns about, and the precedent that was gonna be set, and that was mentioned by one of your speakers tonight. RAD, the Regional Alliance for Downtown, did support the ordinance, and as far as we know, continues to support, we have not heard otherwise. In June of 2017, we held another stakeholders' meeting, presented some of the code revisions, addressed secondary effects, received additional feedback from stakeholders, employees, and the general public, and staff responded to questions throughout the meeting. Everybody had ample time to give public comment, I think we had a two-hour meeting, everybody had three minutes, they had other time, everybody, we got through that, still had some time left over, and let people come back up for additional comments. At this meeting, we did have quite a few people come in favor of the ordinance at that time, so it was, we were starting to get a new, a new interest group involved, more business owners, groups such as Awaken have come and spoken in favor of it. And in 2017, we, recommendation to City Council, we presented to City Council that we had quite a few comments for and against the ordinance, the draft ordinance, some adult business owners and operators submitted comments, comments submitted at the second holder, second stakeholders' meeting were submitted to City Council and are part of your packet tonight. Largely those opposed to the ordinance were owners, managers, and other employees, or independent contractors of the adult businesses. Support for the amendment, we had over seventy-five letters received by City, received by City Council and staff, general public, local business owners, and regional and local organizations. So that's the history. Getting into more the details of the ordinance, and where we are going, or where the draft ordinance is going, currently, adult, as I mentioned, adult businesses are allowed in the industrial zoning districts, so if there was a space that met all the spacing criteria, zoned industrial, the, and adult business would be able to move into that area without a special use permit. There are spacing criteria, that's spacing from residential zoning, gaming, schools, parks, and they are prohibited in the redevelopment districts. You can see here on the table that the adult interactive cabarets, Diamond Dolls, Fantasy Girls, Men's Club, and Wild Orchid are all in nonconforming locations, Showgirls is in a conforming location, and we have two retail stores, Suzie's and Libido, and those are both in nonconforming locations, and neither of the, neither of the retail stores have alcohol sales. Here's the map showing where they're all located, you can see Fantasy Girls, Diamond Dolls, and the men's club up on the northern portion of the map up there, Suzie's is over on Second Street, Wild Orchid is California and Virginia, Libido Adult Store is on South Virginia, in the Midtown area, and Showgirls is over on Telegraph. And as I mentioned earlier, Showgirls is the only conforming location at this time. And the next few slides, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Jensen to address some of the legal
Good evening, Matthew Jensen, Deputy City Attorney. And presentation, or rather, the subject matter presented by strip clubs and bookstores, is speech protected by the First Amendment? The Supreme Court, though, holds that regulation of adult businesses is permissible, when we focus solely on the regulation of the secondary effects of the adult business. This is not censorship of the speech itself. Land use zoning laws can be used to regulate location of the businesses, signage, and alcohol use related to the businesses. The prevention of secondary effects is the goal, there's a more expansive list of them on the next slide, this is not, this is not geared towards suppression of speech, but toward the secondary effects themselves. The Supreme Court has stated it's, it's undeniable that there is an interest in combating the adverse secondary effects, and it is an important interest. We do not need to conduct new studies, we don't need to compile new evidence, independent of that already generated by other jurisdictions, we are allowed to rely on those studies, on that evidence, so long as that relied on is reasonably believed to be relevant to the problem being addressed by the city. And here's your more expansive list, there's a broad spectrum of adverse secondary effects, from litter and lewdness to prostitution, drug use, drug trafficking, sexual assault, exploitation, the exposure of minors to the adult business materials, and the secondary effects. It goes so far as to affect property, there's a negative impact on surrounding properties, businesses, tourism, there's a decrease in property value, urban, and, and increase in urban blight, and there's a hampering of revitalization efforts. And then alcohol, it exacerbates the secondary effects, it impairs judgment, lowers inhibitions, courts have noted the explosive combination of sex and alcohol, and these aggravate the secondary effects. And there are roughly five categories of sources, from which we get our secondary effects, information, land use reports, those compiled by planning departments, and other divisions like that, crime impact reports reliant on analyses of crime data, judicial opinions, court holdings, everywhere from the United States Supreme Court on down through lower federal and state courts, expert reports, criminologists, statisticians, real estate land appraisers, they all provide several, several aspects of analysis, several viewpoints to the negative effects of the adult businesses. And then anecdotal data, this is information that's collected in an informal and an unscientific Although informal and unscientific, it demonstrates that indeed it happens here, and again, the evidence and the studies from across several jurisdictions present widely accepted solutions to ills that are common across the board. Regarding alcohol, studies and, and case law show a connection between adult businesses, alcohol, and victimization of, and sexual violence against women. The clustering of these businesses, and the alcohol associated with these businesses, increase the harmful impacts. Regulation of alcohol, as you see in the case law, is acceptable in and of itself, and in association with adult businesses, where the regulation is again, not directed at suppression of the speech, but at combating the negative secondary effects caused by adult businesses. Regarding signage, again, studies and case law, the negative impact to market value of single, single-family homes is shown related to bright, animated, garish lighting and graphics, and the secondary effects can be minimized by addressing the location and the appearance of the signage. This is not a regulation of speech, and the cases provide guidance, all the way to allowing regulation of the size, the shape, and the location of the advertising. Regarding location, again, studies and case law, surveys find measurable negative secondary effects justifying these regulations. The close proximity to adult businesses has a negative effect on home and commercial property values, and the restrict, the restriction to industrial zones can decrease the negative impacts of the adult businesses, including on property values and on persons who would happen to be in the area. And the Supreme Court, back to the slide there, I switched too early, the Supreme Court has upheld the authority of local governments to regulate the location of adult businesses through zoning, and courts repeatedly have upheld the validity of amortization provisions requiring the relocation, it is a valid time, place, and manner regulation of speech. All subclasses of adult businesses, retail-only bookstores, video arcades, strip clubs, they have secondary effects. And adult business industry-led studies attempting to deny the secondary effects too often violate accepted methodologies, they rely on weak data, and they, they issue improper correlations, but the findings of secondary effects and their relation to adult businesses is widely confirmed by numerous legitimate studies, reports, and cases. These studies, the reports, and the cases they're cited to, in the record of all these proceedings, including those that are, that are listed in the proposed ordinance itself. The case law, the studies, the reports, they all show that the city has a substantial government interest in preventing or ameliorating negative secondary effects, and the city may legitimately regulate adult businesses to address these ills.
Okay, we also looked at the adult business regulations on our, on our neighbors, on Washoe County and Sparks, very similar purpose statements between our proposed ordinance and the existing ordinance in those place, in Washoe County and Sparks. The main purpose statements behind this is to ensure a safe, healthy, aesthetically pleasing area downtown, where adult characterized businesses will not be experienced by minors, so no exposure of the business, or the type of business to minors, passersby, or tourists, anything of that nature. In Washoe County, the adult, adult businesses are allowed in the industrial district, just as they are in the city, city of Reno right now, and there is no limit on alcohol use in those, in the industrial districts in Washoe County, there are no adult businesses in Washoe County. Last, at last, we checked, maybe it went open this week, I'm not sure. City of Sparks, again, same purpose, similar purpose statements, that focused on minors, tourism, a safe, healthy downtown, aesthetically pleasing, fosters activities appropriate for visitors of all ages on the main thoroughfares. Alcohol is not allowed on, at adult businesses in Sparks, they are allowed in the adult dis, in the industrial districts, I'm sorry, they do have a spacing criteria for alcohol sales, has to be a thousand feet from any premises or establishment with alcohol beverages are sold, but they're not, alcohol beverages are not allowed, as I mentioned, at adult businesses, and there are no adult businesses in the city of Sparks. City of Reno adult business regulations, as I mentioned before, we're, excuse me, looking to prevent exposure of material subject to regulation by this section to minors, prevent location of adult businesses near areas frequented by minors, prevent the concentration or clustering of adult businesses in one area and away from areas frequented by tourists, to limit the potential spread of sexually transmitted diseases, and the opportunity for the commission of public offenses, including but unlimited to solicitation, prostitution, trafficking of controlled substances. So again, very similar purpose statements as Washoe County and the city of Sparks. So tonight, before you, our object, objective is present, this is a presentation on the update and comments on the proposed Title 18 amendments, as, as you heard tonight, we have brought this presentation, or similar versions of it, to all sorts of groups, City Council, we've been there two or three times, but you, being the advising body on the Title 18 updates, had not seen this before. We do not have it agendized for you to take action tonight, we want you to become familiar with the ordinance, there's a lot to, to take in on this, and so we hope to come back to you, we're hoping the second meeting of Jan, in January, and we're not, we don't totally have that locked in yet, but we should be bringing it back at second meeting in January for action, but we have two types of recommended amendments or visions, two specific provisions of code for clarification and more effective enforcement actions, which I will touch on in just a moment, land use zoning proposals to decrease impact on secondary effects associated with current locations and the signage of adult businesses. Other amendments that are happening in concert with the amendments to Title 18 are amendments to Titles Four, Five, and Eight. Four being the Business License Code, Title Five, the privileged licenses, permits, and franchises, and Title Eight of Public Peace, Safety, and Morals. This is where the licensing portion of the activities comes into play, work cards, appeal process, regulation of escorts and out-call service, things that aren't contained in Title 18, so it's not something that the Planning Commission looks at, you actually don't have any jurisdiction to review this or comment on this section, these sections, but we want to make sure that you know that these are happening as well, so you may not see, you might think, well, how do you license these? That's not a, that's not a land use issue, that's contained in these other sections of code, and are regulated by City Council directly. The amendments to Four, Five, and Eight are subject to a business impact statement, which we anticipate will be going out in January, and that gives the public an opportunity to comment on these proposed amendments, all of those findings will go to City Council when the ordinance moves that, to that direction. We hope to bring these all together to City Council at the same time, which is why I'm not totally sure on the date when it's gonna get back to you, but we will have the business impact statement, and the recommendation from Planning Commission on Title 18, and bring all of that together to City Council, they can, so they can review it on a whole, and, because they do have to consider all the title amendments. So on the proposed sign regulations, the city can regulate time, place, and manner, as Matt mentioned earlier, images of activities on signs increases the exposure to youth and minors, some of the secondary effects that we were talking about. Staff proposes adult businesses located in nonconforming locations shall only be allowed one square foot of sign area per lineal foot of building frontage, be limited to flat wall signs only, and shall be prohibited from the use of electrically activated signs, limited but not, including but not limited to digital signs. So essentially, it will be wall signs only, no freestanding signs, and no digital signs. Currently, the other, other than the freestanding sign prohibition, the wall sign is consistent with the industrial zoning district, industrial zoning districts do not allow animated signs, that's where their conforming use, we believe that that's the sign criteria that should be placed on them in any location. Staff is proposing a six-month Staff is proposing a six-month time period for them to come into conformance with the signs following the adoption of the ordinance. On the alcohol regulations, alcohol further, as we all know, probably too much, some people, further exacerbates secondary effects. To limit secondary effects, we are proposing to eliminate the presence of alcohol in areas where it would most impact surrounding community. So nonconforming locations in the RDA 1 and 2, and Matt touched on this, but the current nonconforming locations are located in our redevelopment districts. This is where families come, this is where we have tourists, this is where we're trying to revitalize, encourage redevelopment, economic development revitalization in these areas. We want families in these areas, families are starting to come there, not really a whole bunch, maybe around the baseball stadium, but the further exacerbation with the alcohol in combination with the adult business, we believe further contributes to the secondary effects in these areas. In the industrial districts, you just don't have schooled zones in those areas, you don't have people walking to the restaurant in Midtown, you don't have people walking to a baseball game, it's just a different, a different audience, a different surrounding community, a different neighborhood, so it doesn't have the same impacts and secondary effects because you don't have the same audience surrounding it. There was a comment earlier about if the alcohol sales go away, then they would be able to have full nudity. Those are two completely separate ordinances, I know that was a rumor going around there, that is not true. Those are regulated completely different, in different portions of code, and there's no requirement to allow for full nudity based on whether there's alcohol sales or not. The 18-year-old is true, but an 18-year-old is an adult in this country, so that's where staff's reasoning is on that. Industrial areas do not, as I mentioned, do not have the same surrounding community, therefore the secondary effects do not have the same impact. Proposed conforming locations, the best practice is to have adult businesses in industrial areas. Typically, industrial zone areas do not have night activity that conflict with nearby land uses. So in most industrial districts, the day-to-day business shuts down, you might have truck traffic, or as the project came in before you, you're going to have some loading docks maybe, you know, locked up with people working inside, but your standard customers are not going to those areas. Courts have upheld the amortization provisions requiring nonconforming adult businesses to relocate, Matthew mentioned that. Staff recommends that any adult business that is nonconforming due to its location to come into conformance within five years of adoption of the ordinance. Mr. Test did mention if another use comes in and changes the spacing criteria, that is something that we can review to see if that is an alternative in the ordinance, and I think that's a valid request for us to look into further, which is another reason why we're here tonight, is to continue to receive comments. So, before you, we really have it broken down, and you have the full ordinance before you, these are kind of the three big things that we wanted to touch on. So alcohol, signs, and location. Currently, alcohol is allowed in all the locations, nonconforming and conforming. City council gave us direction 2016 to look into no alcohol in the, or alcohol in the conforming locations only, so any of the nonconforming locations, which would be all of them but one, would have to cease selling alcohol or allowing any alcohol on premises within two years of the adoption of the ordinance. Staff has done additional research on that and believe it's defensible down to even six months, but city council did give us direction to look into the two years. A more aggressive approach, which is the way Sparks has gone, is no alcohol in any location. Looking at signs, excuse me, under the current ordinance, digital signs are allowed, and it states that no product for sale or gift or picture of other representation thereof shall be displayed so as to be visible from the street or exterior of the building. We've tightened up that language a little bit to make it a little bit more enforceable, that language is a little bit loose at this time. City council in 2016 gave direction to prohibit digital signs and no depiction of any adult use or activities from the building where it can be visible on the outside from the public right of way. And city council has requested a six-month, or has directed a six-month amortization time on that. Staff looked into regulations on signs a little bit more, looking at prohibition of digital, limiting to wall signs only, and one square foot of sign area to lineal foot of the building frontage, and anywhere from a six-month to one-year amortization period in the nonconforming locations. As Matt mentioned earlier, the, there is, the attorney's office does feel comfortable on requiring the relocation of nonconforming adult businesses to a conforming location outside of the redevelopment districts and the other prohibited areas. City council did not weigh in on this item, this is one that they sent out for public comment and for comments from Planning Commission, and we have had different comments on that. Staff is comfortable with a five-year amortization for not, to relocate from a nonconforming location to a conforming location. That is off, on that point, Michelle, if I can get the overhead, please? Looking at what this mean, what does it mean to relocate to an industrial district in the City of Reno? And these are the maps that were presented to the neighborhood advisory boards. This is a snapshot in time, as, you know, if zone changes or a new use goes in that creates a buffer issue or a separation issue, these maps could be, could come, become out of date, so I would say, you know, any day the business license office is open, then these maps could potentially go out of date, but it gives you an idea roughly of where these locations are. So here's some Longley Lane areas that have industrial zoning and meet the spacing criteria. Somebody did pass out a flyer into some of the neighborhoods that the City of Reno was trying to locate adult businesses in the middle of neighborhoods. Of course, that's not what the City of Reno is doing, but they, somebody did blanket a neighborhood with those flyers, it was incorrect, there was a lot of incorrect wording on those flyers. And so I think this clarifies that we obviously are not trying to put them into neighborhoods, but keeping them really into the industrial districts. Here's the Mill Street area and a little bit east of there. One issue that we didn't, that we meant to clarify a little bit better on the map is this area up in here, although it is zoned industrial, is not, does not meet any of the, does not fall within any of the spacing criteria for adult businesses. This area in here is the Reno Tahoe, the Indian Colony. They don't have zoning, but they have residential uses. So we would recommend that that area be counted as residential zoning and that the spacing criteria be buffered off of that, which would eliminate most of this property in here, potentially the one to the south of Mill Street as well. That was an oversight, it just doesn't pop up on our map as residential zoning, so it doesn't show up very well on our maps, but I just, I wanted to make sure that was clarified. Some areas up off of Para Boulevard, right by the jail, industrial zoned and meets all the spacing criteria. And then quite a bit of land up in the stead vicinity that has quite a bit of acreage and buildings in that area that are appropriately zoned and meet the spacing criteria. There was some concern in the past that there wasn't any industrial land available in the city that met the spacing criteria. We created these maps to demonstrate that there is, that there are industrial zone properties that do meet the spacing criteria. And again, as I mentioned, the, these numbers are going to change depending on who opens up and who opens a business in an area, but when we did this mapping exercise a couple of weeks ago, we had, let me see, 726 acres of industrial zone land that meet the spacing criteria and two, including 222 parcels. So we would be excluding the area by the colony, which is approximately 14 acres, so still over 200 acres, or 200 parcels, I'm sorry, available, that are not, I can't say available, but that have the zoning and meet the spacing criteria. So we did do that exercise as well, that was one of the comments that we heard come up through the public comment process, and we did double-check on that. That concludes my presentation, do you have anything else? That concludes what we have to present to you today. We are available for questions, of course, we have code enforcement and police department here also to answer questions, they have had some inspection efforts in the past that you may want to ask questions about as well.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
And just a reminder to the commission, this is a non-action item, we're just asking questions and getting information this evening, we will not be making any action. So with that, I will open it up for questions from the commission of staff. Mr. Royeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Claudia?
Yes?
Can you give me a brief, what's matter? Yeah? Just turn it up. Can you give me a definition of what an adult business is by code?
Yes, it's actually Section 7.1B in your packet is, Section 1824-203-200, it's lengthy, it's two pages, two and a half pages, so I'm not going to read it to you, but it is 7.1B.
I guess more specifically than, an existing business that sells as an accessory, adult paraphernalia, toys, books, whatever, are they limited to the area or the size? I know in the past we have done that with some liquor stores, that they're limited to the area of liquor sales?
Yes, great question. So on page eight of your draft ordinance in Section 7.1A, B1, we have the exceptions of the business licensed under Title 4. The total square footage of the area devoted to said material does not exceed 7% of the display or retail floor space of the business, or 200 square feet of retail floor space of the business. So it is limited, if they do have certain products, they have to stay under 200 square feet of floor area.
Okay, it's not, it's not whichever is less, it's 200 square feet?
Yeah. I'm sorry, no, it is whichever is less.
Whichever is less?
Correct.
Okay. So...
So you could have Walmart and have a little 200 square foot area?
Well, that's my point, because we have one existing in Meadowwood Mall.
So I've heard.
We have at least one existing in Midtown.
Yes, one in the northwest on Robb Drive.
Right? Those didn't show up, are those going to be part of this, or are we looking, is what city council is asking us to look at, live entertainment? Because you mentioned Suzie's and Libido bookstore also, and I was wondering, you know, how that compares?
Yep, so again, great clarification question. So Suzie's and Libido are both licensed as adult businesses, they could be 100% of their floor area devoted to that. The other businesses that you've mentioned, because of the way the ordinance is written right now, we, it's difficult to enforce that 200 square feet, it doesn't specify floor area, so they could theoretically outline each item that's for sale and that's not going to exceed 200 square feet. By stating floor area, and actually we've looked at wall area also including that, because sometimes it's a hanging display, by adding and clarifying this, those businesses could potentially qualify as an adult business. And so they would be further regulated and would have to either change their floor area, their display area, or apply for license, none of them are in zoning districts that would allow it, or they would have to relocate to an industrial district. Right now, the code isn't written in such a way that we can enforce it on those, on those businesses, but we would be able to in the future.
Okay. Another question I have, are there any existing, is there a moratorium on adult entertainment? And are, there were a couple of addresses 20 years ago, let's say, that no longer exist, but was there any grandfathering allowed with those addresses that carries forward for future locations?
No, there's no moratorium at this time. We had a moratorium for, two years ago for about six months and it expired, and council did not want to renew it. And any...
So there's no cap, there's no maximum?
No.
If somebody found a location in one of the areas that meets the criteria for spacing, and they were in a conforming area, then they could open their business and be a conforming use?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and any use that was here 10, 15, 20 years ago that's gone out of business, there's no grandfathering beyond that time, it's a six-month.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Question for legal, if I could, please? We're talking all about this nonconformance, and my biggest question is, at one time these businesses were in conformance, now they're out of conformance, when did this time period happen to where everybody went out of conformance?
I don't know, we'd have to take a look back at the history of the zoning of those locations. Claudia, you may be able to answer that more clearly.
Thank you. Once again, Claudia Hansen, it was at different times, the ones, I believe, Men's Club and the two over off of Fourth Street would have been with the adoption of the downtown ordinance, so that would have been '06, '05, '06, something like that. Wild Orchid has never had conforming zoning. Libido had industrial zoning at one time quite a few years ago, probably the late 90s, early 2000s is when that came into play.
My biggest, my biggest concern is, is at one point in time, somebody had to be in conformance, and if Wild Orchid's never been in conformance, how are they still alive?
I haven't done a whole lot of research on that business license, I have done the research on the zoning ordinance, that property has never been zoned industrial.
I can answer that question.
If the commission calls you up, then we'll have you answer it, thank you.
So there's no way Wild Orchid can ever become a conforming business, we're in a conforming area. They're always going to be nonconforming in the area they're in right now.
Any of the nonconforming businesses are in that same situation, none of them have industrial zoning at this time, and we would look at all of those the same way.
If we allowed it before, to me, it seems like a grandfather thing for these guys, I mean, if it's happened for over 20 years, and they're still in nonconformance, I would think there'd be a grandfather clause involved here for those who've been in business so long, regardless of what City of Reno's already done or will do, that's just the way I look at it.
Understood.
And I think somebody mentioned the fact that City of Reno wanted to take somebody's property, I thought the new laws under eminent domain wouldn't allow that.
It would not be an eminent domain.
To take someone's property?
I'm not going to get into a legal debate with you at this place, at this location.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't believe that would come into play.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas? Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Johnson, I'll step in front of Commissioner Marshall if that's right, Commissioner Johnson, we have police here?
We do, yes.
I have a question for them.
Good evening.
Thank you. So, conversation tonight is looking at, obviously, the secondary effects, and one of the comments that I heard in one of the slides that was up there was that, you know, there's secondary effects associated with adult businesses, and there's concern about those in their current locations. And the proposal of moving them to the industrial areas, which I understand... areas, which I understand that, what I'm hearing is that there's still secondary effects, should they be moved to those industrial areas, but I'm hearing that the, that that's less. And I'm wondering, when I look at this list, there's certain things here that obviously require police intervention. If we move these from their current locations to the industrial areas, how does that impact police ability to respond to those based on your presence downtown versus, say, the northern part of Stett?
Mac Venzon, deputy chief of police, for the record. I don't know that the response is affected at all. I mean, there are officers assigned to beats all over the city, and so the, the beat integrity would remain intact. Certainly, we have more officers in the downtown core, but it wouldn't prevent response to any of the areas identified as conforming areas, based on the fact that the way we have the resources of the police department distributed throughout the city.
Okay. And then, I guess, a secondary question that, one more question, Commissioner Wysocki, and then I'll let you respond to that. One of the concerns, I guess, that I have in looking at the possibility of these being relocated, is that then, in the downtown area or the current locations, we have the potential for those buildings to be vacant. And I have some concerns, and I'd like maybe the conversation from the police standpoint of a vacant property versus an occupied property in terms of the crime statistics in general that you would see in a situation like that.
So I'd only be speaking of generalities, right, without speaking of specific locations and type of business and type of ingress and egress and access control that's provided to a vacant building. But in general terms, sure, I think it's plausible. It's a criminal justice, criminology, what am I trying to say, theory, that legitimate business does keep out illegitimate activity. And, and we see that, in the general terms, we see that very often, right? If we can bring legitimate business into a vacant building, it's going to drive out that illegitimate activity. So the concern about a vacant building would certainly be one we would consider, but in our efforts to try to keep the crime down in what would be a vacant building, we're very closely with code compliance in making sure that the, those access controls are in place to keep any criminal activity outside where it doesn't really, it's not affected by the vacancy of the building or the occupancy of the building, based on access control.
Okay. So would there be, I guess, recommendations for how that, you know, that vacant property would be addressed or cordoned off, or, you know, any lighting or anything along that lines?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, that all falls within code and code compliance in terms of how, if it's a vacant property, what has to be done to make it at least present appropriately, and then any safety measures, or if there is criminal activity that we know that is occurring there, and working with code, dealing with the criminal activity in and of itself, right, the crime and the criminal, but then trying to prevent further criminal activity there, working on access control with code.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll defer additional questions to deputy, if anyone else would like.
Any other questions for?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Deputy Chief, I had the opportunity to ride in the bar car a couple of times over the last five or six years, and I'm telling you, it was really a thrill. But I also got to walk with the officers on the streets, specifically Second Street, South and North Virginia. If I were to take all the businesses on Second, West Second Street, and I took the adult entertainment businesses, on the other hand, which one's going to fill up with the most complaints for, for service?
In terms of calls for service?
Yes, sir.
I would say if you took the, the aggregate total of all of West Second Street, certainly that's going to outweigh any of the adult businesses.
And is there secondary effects for what's going on on Second Street?
Absolutely. I think the alcohol discussion that was made earlier about secondary effects, inhibitions, all of those things are very valid concerns.
If I can jump in really quickly on that. The secondary effect doctrine is only related to adult businesses, as far as the legal aspect goes. And Matt can address that more if you want, but that theory and that court finding is only based on adult businesses.
Well, we're looking at age of twenty-one, of legal drinking age, and that's, they're an adult, so I'm looking at, part of this is an adult industry down there on Second Street. That's, that's the way I'm looking at it.
And I understand that's the way you're looking at it. If you look at Title eighteen twenty-four, there's a definition of what we consider adult interactive cabarets, adult businesses, when the city of Reno. That's what we are looking at regulating tonight. We are not, or through this process, we are not looking at regulating bars, tattoo parlors, casinos, medical marijuana, anything else. The only thing on these adult businesses that we're discussing tonight are the ones defined in eighteen twenty-four as attached to your staff report. The secondary effect doctrine only relates to these types of adult businesses, not standalone bars, not casinos.
Okay. And answers it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
Claudia? And may, I think this is just some education for me. Why can't the alcohol-related elements of this be done through the chapters four or five, rather than Title eighteen? Why is that? What's the link?
You should have been in all of our staff meetings. We went round and round on this so many times. And we do have, so the, in four, five, and eight, it's the licensing portion of it, and the privilege license that goes to city council. The use of alcohol and the sale of alcohol, and the effect it has on the property and the surrounding use, and where that alcohol is going to be allowed, lends itself to the land use portion of the ordinance and Title eighteen. So you've got the licensing, privilege license attached to the, the actual person who holds the license, and then the use, which is regulated in eighteen. So we've got kind of two elements of it. Part of it's in each one. But we had that exact same question at the staff level, and this is where we've landed.
Okay. Looking at, I'm sorry, this is a question just on your chart, the last slide of the presentation.
Could I get that back up, please?
The, just quickly, the, the city council gave direction on no depiction of adult use on signs, and it doesn't sound like there's a content restriction on the staff recommendation? And there is some...
It is in there. If you look at the specifics of the ordinance, it didn't really fit in the slide very well.
Okay. So, that's okay.
We were moving forward with council's recommendation on that, that no depiction of the adult use
Got it.
would be presented on the outside.
Thank you.
But this was just more the specific size and type of sign. For those of you who've seen my presentations, this is one of our wordier presentations, but there's a lot to cover, so I apologize for the length of our slides.
Yeah, no, I just didn't see it. So, thanks for that.
Sure.
The five-year amortization has staffed on analysis of whether that could be reduced to three years?
Matthew Jensen, deputy city attorney. I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know if the analysis has been done down to that short of a period of time, but we can get back to you on that.
You're comfortable with five as being within our legal ability?
Yes, sir.
So Claudia, can I ask a couple more questions?
Of course.
We're not proposing to move any businesses. Are we, we're just amortizing the non-conforming use and saying they must be shut within those time periods, and there's, the demonstration that you provided indicates that there's available, properly zoned and spaced land if they want to move?
Correct. The existing non-conforming locations would no longer be able to be in existence in five years. They could reopen in a conforming location. We're not asking any of them to close completely, but to relocate.
Okay. And it, I think, just responding to some of Commissioners Hawkins' questions about, while I recognize that the secondary effects doctrine is related to adult businesses, I think we all can agree there are areas, and we have areas of problems within our city that we'd like to improve through different mechanisms.
Of course.
And so, for example, the, you know, we have different strategies for different areas on how to deal with either non-conforming issues or with problem areas that we might have crime associated with other existing businesses. But really, the, as I understand it, the question here is whether or not we want to take a more aggressive approach regarding these particular businesses because of the types with the locations that they're, that they're currently existing, and what we're trying to do primarily with those issues. Is that
That's correct. Yeah.
kind of a correct way to frame that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think that's all the questions I have right now.
A little more on that. We, we know we have problem areas, and it's, we are reviewing the nightclub ordinance, alcohol sales in various areas. It's just a different way of looking at, there's, those don't have the same secondary effect history that, as adult businesses do.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I want to get to Commissioner Levis, but before we do, Commissioner Wysocki wanted to jump in?
No?
Okay. Commissioner Levis?
Well, I don't know if I really have a question as much as a comment to follow on Hawkins. I don't know if it's appropriate now. Are we going to have comments, or?
Yeah, let's, let's finish up questions, and then we'll get to comments and input for staff here in a second. So other questions?
Deputy Chief, if I can get you back up, please. Spacing between businesses, can you, adult entertainment businesses specifically, can you give us any background information on what is appropriate spacing between businesses? Are they better off being located apart from each other, or within the same block, or within a same square mile? Can you give us any background based upon calls of service, and not just to Reno, but any information that you might have? And if not, can you produce it for us at our next meeting?
Mac Venzon, deputy chief of police, for the record. I, no, I don't think I could do that today. Could I produce that for you? Certainly, I could try.
Okay.
Spacing, obviously, is not in my wheelhouse, but as it relates to crime, I could certainly try to look for that.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is, is that I, I think of areas, one came up in particular, and, and I'm thinking about New Orleans, okay? And you, and you, you've got everything confined, confined into several square blocks, and, you know, it's, it's enforced with, by walking, by police on horses, no vehicles unless it's a major catastrophe that, that has taken place. And yet, I look at maybe some of the ordinance that's being proposed, that we can be commenting on, as far as spreading the businesses out a greater distance. And I, I would like some more information on that, so that we can get more information to council.
Sure. Yeah, I'll absolutely look into it.
Okay. And, and a question that came up earlier, and I, in talking about the North Valleys, we've, we've had several large projects come before us in the last few months for North Valleys. We've talked beyond hours, literally, of how
Yes, sir.
is RPD going to support this neighborhood? How are they going to support, you know, this growth? And every time, we've had answers of, well, right now, we've got limited resources, but we've got enough cooperative resources in the area. Is that the answer that I was hearing you give to Commissioner Hawkins earlier about there is enough police force if two or three adult businesses went up there to the North Valleys, that it would be covered, or is RPD going to require additional service?
Yeah. So basically, what we do monthly is that we evaluate calls for service. We evaluate deployment of resources in terms of where we deploy those resources, based on call for service volume, right? Based on crime activity, based on a few different measures in terms of how we deploy resources. So, back to your question of spacing and all of that. If the calls for service were generated in such a way that it required more resources, we would deploy resources there based on the calls for service. What that would mean is possibly a reduction of service in another area, based on the resource, the number of resources we have. But, you know, that's, that's a monthly evaluation on our part that we do, sometimes weekly, based on, on crime statistics.
Okay. And I am not implying to the business owners that are here this evening, or their representatives, that, that there is a, a level of crime that goes with it. My question is, is based solely on the fact that right now, in the downtown area, as you referred to earlier in your response, you already have a, a pretty good, or a reasonable number of officers to, to cover the area. So it wouldn't require additional to leave the area, or to pull people from downtown out of the area for any crime increase?
Well, it would depend on, on if that crime moves, you know, and crime is, a lot of times, crimes of opportunity move around, and we see it currently during the holiday season, right, where we have a lot of burglaries and what have you. And so, we'll deploy resources based on that.
Okay.
And so, it would be reasonable to think that if crime were to reduce in the downtown core, would we redeploy some of the resources in the downtown core or somewhere else? Absolutely.
Okay.
It's all based on, on call volume and crime stats.
I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Claudia, I have a question for you. In our industrial areas, several of them have charter schools and public schools.
Yes.
I even recall one evening, we had a church go in to an industrial park, and obviously, you remember that conversation also?
I do.
Where I asked the pastor to come to the podium, and, and had him confirm that adult entertainment businesses are an allowed use in the industrial area, and they be, may be his neighbor right next door to his church.
Yes.
And his response was that he would welcome them, and they would pray for the
And they would pray for them, yes.
the occupants of the building next door.
Yes.
Will that affect any of this proposed ordinance going forward? Any of the schools?
That, we're not proposing any changes to that section of code.
Okay.
We are, we've, the proposal, page nine of the draft ordinance, is removing the spacing criteria from unrestricted gaming operations. Schools, there's no change, there was some change in wording, but there's no change in the result of it. We've added parks and playgrounds to clarify that those are one of the protected land uses, and we have proposed to reduce the spacing between adult businesses from a thousand to five hundred feet.
Okay.
And we will. I, Matt and I were talking, we think we have some of the studies on clustering versus dispersing. I just can't remember exactly what it was. I don't think it gets down to this level of detail of what's the magic number on spacing, but we'll, we will pull that information and get it back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Thank you. I'm going to ask one question, since we're on it. Commissioner Hawkins, under that item for the five hundred versus a thousand, I'm fine with getting more information on it, but what constitutes essentially the first one in? What's, is it the, at the entitlement phase, that if a, a business comes in, then a new one is proposed within five hundred feet, or does the business have to be established and in place and operational to be considered a existing business?
It would be the time of application. And at that point, it would be, depending whether it was a business license, the business license establishes the use. If they just come in for a, a building permit for a TIA tenant improvement, then that's not going to establish the use. Getting the business license, the, the alcohol license through city council would be establishing the use. So it's going to be the time of application.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Claudia?
Yes.
I'm looking at page twelve of the report.
Of the report or the ordinance?
It's, it's the draft.
Okay.
And we keep tossing around the word amortization, and if I read the first couple of sentences... And if I read the first couple of sentences and the rest is blotted out except for one area in the center, there, it seems like we're missing some words there. It, it goes into, to nothing that makes sense.
So, those licenses, nonconformance with the provisions of this chapter, at the date of adoption of this ordinance, shall, if the business is nonconforming due to its location, and then it drops down to items one, two, and three.
I, I don't see the shall part. See something there? I don't see it.
Right here. If, and then it drops down to these.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Johnson, one more question for Claudia. Just, I saw prior to any of the changes in here, there's obviously information in the code talking about nonconforming uses and change of ownership. And when that happens, obviously, all of the privileges, according to this, go away.
Correct.
If I'm, as it is, as, under the current code.
Correct. That is correct.
My question is, we have other instances of nonconforming uses in areas, you know, obviously not dealing with this, but industrial in multifamily or areas throughout the city. And they've come to us occasionally where you've got something that's a grandfathered use.
Correct.
Is there anything currently in the code other than if those uses change ownership, where we would see this level or this desire for amortization of a, a currently grandfathered use? Are you aware of any of that?
We have nothing else in code similar to this.
So, and then, a, and currently, unless this change is made, there is nothing, that, that's the reason for this change, is that currently, the only amortization or the only change in this from a grandfather's standpoint would be a change of ownership. Unless there's...
Under the current code.
Under the current code.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to...
Yeah, it's, it's a funny section, the way it's worded right now, so it's a good question.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one more question for the Deputy Chief, if I could. Just looking over my notes. There was a question that was raised or a comment that was raised during public comment regarding the period of time, you know, if a, a patron to one of these businesses and there's no alcohol allowed, they're, they're not going to be drinking during that time, but they could before and they could after. Is there precedent or, or an experience that, you know, you can convey or from your experience, I guess, that my concern is that, you know, we're going to get these spikes of alcohol use ahead of time, potentially in a shorter amount of time before someone goes to that business? Is that a valid concern?
Mac Venzon, Deputy Chief, for the record. It's not a valid concern of mine, physiologically speaking. You dissipate alcohol at a, at a pretty regular rate. It's different for men than it is for women, but alcohol is dissipated at a pretty consistent and regular rate among people. And so, the longer period of time that you don't consume the alcohol, once you have reached a plateau of a blood alcohol concentration, you know, that starts to go down. And it's pretty consistent in, in the way that it goes down. So, that longer period of time without drinking could certainly alleviate the intoxication level as you go, you know, over time. The idea that you would spike or binge drink, as it's commonly called, before maybe you would enter a business, would, would lend itself to, and a blood alcohol concentration going up as you enter, plateauing at some point based on the amount you drank and then reducing from there.
I guess my concern isn't necessarily the blood alcohol content of someone, once they're in the business, it's that period of time between, say, he or she is at home or at a bar, in that period of time between that point and when they walk in the door of that business. If, you know, they're spiking and then there's sort of that transportation piece before they go into the business. That's my concern, is that period of time.
Make sure I understand the question correctly. It's a DUI concern, essentially, is what you're asking?
It, it's a, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be hard for me to comment on that, you know, it's, DUI is a specific intent type of crime, if you will. And so, you have to be, I guess, willing to take that measure to drive and, or transport yourself in one way or another to the business.
I guess I was looking for feedback from you if there's, you know, we see cases sometimes where, I'm pretty sure we limit the type of alcohol that's allowed if, you know, if it's just beer or wine, you know, there's types of alcohol. So, you know, for those types of businesses or uses, if you've experienced any sort of, you know, increase in, you know, DUI activity surrounding those or, you know, that's, that's sort of the heart of my question.
Even if I were to hazard a guess, it would be so anecdotal...
Yeah, that's fine.
That I don't know that it would be reasonable.
That's fine. I appreciate the candid feedback.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more for Claudia, please.
Sure.
Claudia, has, has it been discussed with council or has council been talked to about any incentives for existing nonconforming businesses to relocate to conforming areas? You know, if that discussion is taking place?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I have, I have a question for Matt, and I might hurt myself because it's a legal question. So, hopefully, forgive me if I'm, I'm the wording on this. Something that, that I, I think it's been alluded to a little bit here, but one of your slides in talking about this, and I'm, I'm not, I don't want to debate legal stuff because I can't. I just want an explanation, maybe an, an example of this. Under the federal restrictions in case law, there's some conversation about, you know, this idea of secondary evidence and that you don't have to, you can use case law from other locations, saying it's reasonably believed to be relevant to the problem the city addresses, which is, I think it's on your, what's the federal restriction in the case law slide back a little bit? My question, and, and looking at it, I'm not going to debate the secondary effects aspect of it. I guess the question is if we're using, looking at other case law, is there other case law that is applied to locations that have some of the same issues with gaming and 24-hour alcohol that we see in Reno? Because I think this is maybe what Commissioner Hawkins was getting to and, and I, I understand, I don't, you know, again, I'm not debating any of this. I just, I'm, I'm questioning in terms of, from a legal standpoint, if that's one of the specific things that we have to say that it's relevant to us. Do we have examples of that that are in locations that are comparable to some of the other conditions that exist in Reno?
Matthew Jensen, Deputy City Attorney. The case is focused on the adult businesses themselves. The secondary effects doctrine focuses on the businesses there. The studies focus on the, the effects of those businesses and, and don't broaden...
So, so, right. So, but I guess that, that's the, the, are those, you know, a, again, I'm, I'm, I'm out of my element here. I'm just trying to figure out, because I think some of the concern that I'm seeing and I'm hearing is that some of these secondary effects exist independent, perhaps, of what we're looking at because of some of the other elements that exist here. So, I'm only asking if that has been looked at, that, that term of, of relevant, you know, here, if that's a concern or if that's something that the city has been looking at in terms of other case examples that are being used.
I would have to give you a bit of an educated guess that bars, bars do exist in many, many other jurisdictions and, and exist alongside adult businesses. Again, the focus is on the secondary effects of the adult businesses, not other negative effects from something like marijuana distribution facility or bars. The focus is on the adult businesses.
And if I could just maybe help out a little bit?
Please do.
Since I am an attorney.
Yes.
License to give free advice. The reason why it's relevant here is because, and why it's limited to the, this context, is that you have your First Amendment issues related to adult businesses. So, the reason that why it's called secondary, in effect, is you're not regulating the primary business of, of freedom of expression, but you're looking at this second effects doctrine. And it does relate to this other point that I think we were talking about earlier, that there can be, you know, there, there's lots of, we have lots of issues in the city, you know, related to, you know, downtown and whether or not, you know, we have too many, didn't we cap the number of liquor stores downtown? So, there are other effects associated with either conforming or nonconforming businesses. The issue that's kind of before us today is, is there a reason to look at adult businesses as a particular kind of nonconforming use that we should take an action on that will essentially move, move them from one location and make them, you know, push them to areas in which they are conforming, which is the industrial zone? That, that's how I look at that particular issue, that this doctrine came about because of the interplay between First Amendment freedom of expression issues and legitimate land zoning, or land use planning and zoning concerns. And how do you marry those two? You know, with a bar, you don't particularly have the First Amendment issue. You may have other issues of where you want liquor licenses to be, to be located. So, that's, I don't know if that helps address that issue.
No, thank you. I think it, it, it does in terms of, I mean, I think I've, I've got a pretty clear understanding of, of why we're looking at secondary effects as opposed to First Amendment. That's clear to me. I guess I just wanted to make sure, as a part of the legal approach that's out there, that, you know, of all of, I mean, this substantive packet that we looked at, the examples that I saw in here that were being referenced did not have the same, the, the examples that were there in terms of the secondary effect were in locations where, and that's, again, the question for relevancy, were all of the same other conditions in place so that you could show that the secondary effects were directly a result of, of this, this particular adult business, as opposed to other things that we have? And it's been clarified in terms of what you've said and, and what Commissioner Marshall has said. But that's, that's where my question is trying to say, is that, you know, we, we have all of this case law and I, I can't debate it and I, I understand where it's going. I just want to make sure that when we're looking at it, that there's not, that, that it's also relevant because of all of the other things that are in Reno. So, it sounds like you guys understand that you're looking at it from a narrow standpoint and I totally understand that. So, I'm, I, I think that answers the question. So, I appreciate that. Sorry for going around and around, but again, legally, that's your area.
So, second part of our task here was to get input from staff. That was the first part. The second part was to provide any input or feedback to staff based on the question or the answers that you've gotten to the questions. Is there's any specific feedback that you'd like to give that you haven't already? Commissioner Levis, I know you had a comment you wanted to make that wasn't necessarily a question, so let's start with you.
Yes, Commissioner Levis. I guess listening to all this, and I had the very same question that Commissioner Hawkins had about the nonconforming and conforming uses. And I guess, I, I kind of, when I hear that the Chamber of Commerce is behind it, I, I think of other examples potentially. And there's, maybe there's other industries with negative externalities, secondary effects, but not by doctrine, perhaps a batch plant, a asphalt plant. And when the asphalt plant was built 40 years ago, it was out in the middle of nowhere and everybody was happy with it. The city grows up around it and so then it becomes nonconforming. Back when it was conforming, they invested, they put in their investment and the city grew up around it. And then now, through a series of actions that the city has taken, now, not only is it nonconforming, but you're going to require them to remove it in five years because it is nonconforming. I have a real problem with that because it's almost like this is a serial taking. It's not one action where they're telling this business that they have to leave. Then, we're not telling the batch plant they have to leave, when they're conforming yesterday, now you got to leave. It's through over a series of actions that they became nonconforming and then now that they're nonconforming, we're going to kick them out within five years. I think that the Chamber's got a valid point, that this could spill over to a lot of other businesses potentially. And I, I think that there's a lot of other problems, perhaps, that, that this could open up. But I just, you could look at a lot of businesses that could end up becoming the, kind of the frog in boiling water over a series of 20, 40 years. And, and then now we're taking away their licenses and kicking them out. So, on that aspect, I have a problem and agree with the Chamber and, and we've just kind of edged into this. And I think we're, we're hanging, the, some of this is kind of on a lot of legal technicalities that maybe there's other problems or other reasons, but let's address those and let's not just tell the batch plant they have to leave in a few years.
Other feedback for staff?
I'm in agreement with the signage. I, I think this, the, the changes to signage are appropriate and for all that this planning commission and previous planning commissions have gone through, because of some existing signage around town, that, you know, the, the signage part of it is, is quite appropriate. As far as a two-year amortization of alcohol in nonconforming locations, I'm, I'm kind of torn on that. I think if, if a business is going to relocate on their own merits, that they should be given ample time, including serving alcohol during that time, because that is part of their business per forma. That's part of what is keeping their cash flow going at this time and that will help them pay for the cost to relocate. I would like to see council consider maybe some incentives to help some of these existing businesses that have been here for, in excess of 20 years, at the, at the existing location that they're at, whether it's the current owner or a previous owner. Maybe this, maybe city council can come up with some incentives to help work with, with relocating the business. I gave a lot of thought to location and amortization and with a construction background, knowing how long it takes to do due diligence to buy property or a building, to prepare drawings, to go through a building permit process for construction. If it's new construction, two years is kind of tight, it can be done. But if it's a remodel of an existing building, two years is a long time. I mean, it probably wouldn't take 12 months if it was an existing facility. So, the, the period of time for relocation, in my mind, is, is appropriate. It might be a, a little conservative if it's a new, a new project, but I'm sure that in the next few months, between us and staff and city council, we can, you know, help massage that a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Chair. I've got to go off of what Commissioner Wieski says as far as the incentives that the city of Reno needs to put forward. I mean, if we're looking at litigation down the pike, in, in some ways, you can think about that and how much that's going to cost versus a small amount of incentives to help some of these businesses move into a conforming spot. That's something I'd like to see done and that's why I'm chiming in with Commissioner Wieski.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, I guess one of the, I guess to echo Commissioner Wieske, I think the signage issue is one that I completely agree. I think, you know, looking back on it, that's probably one of the reasons why we're here right now, is some of the concerns with signage. But beyond that, I guess what I'm struggling with is, I mean, legally, I believe the city's, what I'm seeing, within their rights to do this. I guess I'm wondering if we should. I have some concerns, maybe from a, you know, from a development standpoint in terms of, you know, and maybe I'm looking at the specific places that we're dealing with here and the time that they've been there and what has happened around them. I don't believe that, you know, despite some instances of, you know, I know businesses have come and gone, especially across from the Wild Orchid, but development has happened. Midtown has happened, the ballpark has happened within the 20 years since these have been here. I don't see these, and Fourth Street is developing despite what's out there. So, you know, I'm not so sure that relocating these businesses or forcing these businesses to relocate is necessarily going to have the impact that we want it or are thinking that it can have. And that was why I was asking about vacant buildings. The last thing I want to see is more vacant buildings, especially in these areas. It's hard enough going to games at the ballpark now and having to walk past four vacant parking lots to get there. Having another building that's dark, and granted, you know, nobody's, at least, would, you know, necessarily tying the two together, but I guess in looking at this and this policy and, you know, what we're doing, and to echo what Commissioner Levis was saying, we're kind of being punitive on a specific entity for reasons that are not their doing. They, you know, established themselves with, an exception that was mentioned tonight, acceptably, and have operated under those conditions, and now we're looking at changing the rules. And I don't know that just because we can, we should. So if we're providing feedback here in terms of moving forward, other than the signage issue, which I think is just part of being a good neighbor, and which I haven't heard a lot of concerns or discussion to the other side, but to go in and, one, take away the alcohol license, which is the essence of the business, which could change the business in terms of what they're doing, and then to force them to relocate to areas that, you know, again, as we say, without any financial compensation, without any, you know, necessarily support, and with some concerns in terms of activity that might happen if we do move those out to Stead or to the other side of the airport, or to areas that would require some changes to city operation. So again, just because we can legally and, you know, according to what's here, I would just question if we should. And that's, I would just like that to be part of the discussion moving forward, that, you know, signage is an issue, but to take these out, I don't know that they're having, I'm not seeing the same level of effect that perhaps I'm hearing. So that's just, that's my input. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. I really think that you've kind of identified the key issue, which is we've already, through zoning, have identified where we want these businesses to exist, and that's in the industrial zone, not in the zones that they, except for one, are located in. So we've already made that policy judgment, and the question is, is there a reason to identify this one particular use as opposed to other non-conforming uses? And to say, we're going to treat this business class differently, and we're going to require, or we're going to set an amortization period, which essentially allows you to continue to recoup your investment, and then say no more? And the really, to answer the question of why now and why this business, I think goes back to the introductory information regarding, is this key to our development as a city? And to me, it's no different than the train trench. You know, the arguments that were presented, you know, in essence were, what are some of the key things we need to do to make the core of our city a place where people want to be? So there's a whole big, I mean, you know, we had trains running through, stopping traffic, and, you know, quite honestly, a bit of a cow town. And so we spent a heck of a lot of money putting the train into a trench. Me, this is kind of the same type of planning decision as to whether or not, is there a justification for treating this non-conforming use differently than other non-conforming uses? And essentially to move, you know, you, from a planning perspective, you don't encourage non-conformity, you try to eventually, through either change of ownership or other types of, you know, a lapse in use, you move, you try to over, you know, over time, get non-conformity out of your existing zones. So this is an aggressive technique to move these businesses to someplace else. And the way that I look at it is, I say that the reasons why we want to do that and what we want to do to our city justify that different treatment. Because they, I believe, and being around, you know, walking the California corridor and North Virginia through Midtown, I see this as a distinct type of land use activity that detracts affirmatively from our ability to redevelop and to continue to move the city in the direction that it's moving. And so, thank you. And so that, to me, is justification for why we single out this use. Now, I think the question that you raise and the Chamber raises is a very good one. If this, why not something else? And I get, I see it as, we have a range of tools in our toolbox that as planners and as a city, we can delve into to address particular issues. We've used, like, for example, like I indicated with the downtown city with liquor stores, we used a cap in terms of trying to get a handle on what are the, you know, different kinds of ways of addressing some of our concerns. As the city develops just on its own, you see that, you know, the more pernicious types of activities tend to be pushed out of the redevelopment areas in terms of crime and other areas. Commissioner Hawkins, it might have, you know, that kind of deleterious effect, but over time, I think development addresses those. So in my mind, it's a useful tool that the city, you know, in some sense, I think the Chamber's crying a bit of wolf, because it's not like we've used, the city's used this element ever. And so here is the one place where it may be appropriate, that we have a very limited number of non-conforming uses, it's a very discreet application, and to me, it's not opening the barn door. You know, it's being able to preserve that planning tool and use it in appropriate circumstances. So I don't, you know, I don't see it as, oh my gosh, now everybody's susceptible. The two issues where I have concerns are with, where do they go? And it is in our role as, you know, we do, we do come from wards, but we, I think, in this setting, we do represent the entire city, and the question is, okay, do we, are we creating an impact someplace else instead of here when we do this? And I think that's a legitimate issue that I think we should hear more about from staff and what are potentially the adverse consequences of moving it someplace else? Are we just, you know, is it just a NIMBY thing that we're just going to kick them out someplace else and we're creating problems in another part of our city to get them out of downtown? The other issue is, I really do appreciate Commissioner Wieske's talking about incentives, because I think we need to find both some carrots here to go along with these pretty aggressive sticks. And I don't know if there is some way that we can, you know, work with some of the amortization periods or, you know, allow more flexibility with the two-year non, you know, no alcohol thing, if there's an agreement to relocate within X number of years, or some kind of creative planning device that, you know, would incentivize a voluntary move in exchange for some greater allowance. But, so I do think if there's some way that we can, you know, sometimes I think Commissioners Hawkins, it's hard to figure out, well, you know, or justify the payment of dollars for this, but if there can be other non-dollars, you know, non-fiscal or non-impacts to the general fund, is that the right, I don't know if that's your guys' term or the city's terminology, for other, yes, for other, you know, other benefits that could accrue that won't cost the city money. And that, to me, is a, I would be very interested in staff's examination of the pool of those options that we might be able to create to soften some of the blow of the big stick. So those are my kind of general comments, and thanks for listening.
Appreciate those. I know Commissioner Levis is ready to respond.
Commissioner Levis, I'm glad you brought up the train trench, because I think that that as an example of progress is a very good one. And at the time, the city bought the land from the landowners, and through eminent domain and some through participation, and that's not what's happening here. I think that's significantly different. And I think that that's a good example, I'm glad you brought it up, because it was, it wasn't just legislated out of business there. Actually, they even had other incentives that we've had to deal with here with casino licensing and allowing licenses to be transferred elsewhere. So I think that just to legislate it away is, I guess, really what I find most offensive about it, rather than working with them and buying them out, or not everybody there wanted to be bought out for the trench either. And I'm sure a lot of people weren't happy with their price, but it was a different process.
I'll get to you in just a second. I've got a question to respond to what Commissioner Marshall said. Two points. As an attorney, so your first point was you said that you felt that there was a direct connection between the use and the potential impacts of that use on activities, redevelopment, potential, things like that in the downtown? And then the other point was pushing that use and the potential impacts that it would have in the area that it's relocated. As an attorney or just, you know, someone who's looking at these potential impacts, what type of evidence are you looking for that substantiates that claim other than saying, I think this use has this impact?
I think that gets to the kind of the guts of some of Matt's presentation, that what is our evidentiary base? Are, we need to have, you know, there has to be a, I won't get into the legalese, but fundamentally, we have to have some sort of evidence before us on which to base a decision to have this type of amortization period. And from what Matt's recitation of the case law really shows is that it can come from a bunch of different sources. So here's what I find convincing. One is the studies that have been performed that show that this type of business, this type of business does have these secondary effects generally, and you can just rely on that by itself. But that's not all. Then there's other case law that you can rely on that says, you know, that confirms that that's a rational basis upon which to regulate in this area. Then there's anecdotal evidence, and I think in our packet, there's adequate evidence of not necessarily all, you know, there seems to be a wide disparity in terms of the relative law-abiding nature of the activities within these establishments. And to me, that illustrates that, yes, there are secondary effects here that are demonstrated from the businesses here. Third, we've had, and the record is just replete with a whole bunch of anecdotal evidence from commenters, and we heard some comment from the, from Edon today about the ability to attract businesses and people to the area as a direct, our inability to, I don't say inability, our reduced ability or affected ability to attract businesses in this area because of these particular longstanding, but of this particular kind of adult business use in these areas that we're trying to direct development and intensification of use and residential use, mixed use within these areas. And so it, to me, to me, there's a whole range of evidence available to us that justify taking this action.
Thank you. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know how many of you, the Commissioners, have lived in Reno for a long time, but back in the 70s, the Ponderosa was a very vibrant hotel-casino. There's going to be one secondary problem here when they have to move, and that's we have another vacant building, just like the different ones that were down here off of Third Street. And how long is it going to stay vacant? Till someone decides they can go ahead and move in, buy it, and do their business? I mean, we've got a, we've got a situation here now where if these folks are pushed out to the industrial limits, then we have our secondary problem here with a vacant building. And we have to remember that when we make decisions later on, is what's going to take place once Wild Orchid and the different entities go over to the industrial area? We have to be aware that there's going to be a void or a vacuum, and something's going to have to fill that vacuum or the void.
Commissioner Wieske?
Mr. Chairman, I disagree with Commissioner Hawkins, because my understanding of the property is that the hotel still exists, or the motel or apartment still exists in the tower. There's residents and tenants in there right now, and the Wild Orchid assumed a portion of the old gaming area from the old Ponderosa Hotel, just as any tenant would. The owner of the property, if they were to move that business out of there, would still own the property, would still have the ability to put some other tenant in that space that is a conforming use, and still have the tenants that they have in the tower. So I disagree with you on that, respectfully, but I disagree.
Can I jump in really quick on that one?
Please.
Claudia Hansen, planning manager, for the record. Just to support what Commissioner Wieske just mentioned, all of the locations are zoned MU, are mixed-use zoning district, which I would say is our most desirable zoning district. It allows the broadest list of uses. Midtown is a very popular area until it gets to the California-Virginia intersection area. Downtown is, the MU district allows for restaurants and retail and office and high-density, unlimited-density residential. It isn't really in front of the baseball stadium. Along Fourth Street, we've got a lot of redevelopment, a lot of action until you get to certain intersections where the adult businesses are located, and that is a fact, that is some of the secondary effects, is, if we get to that list, how about this one? So the negative impacts on surrounding properties, businesses and tourism, and the urban blight and the difficulty on redevelopment and reuse of properties without these businesses in these areas, it would support the reduction of the secondary effects and would support redevelopment in these areas. We don't anticipate that those buildings would stay vacant. We would anticipate that they would be revitalized, reused, redeveloped quickly. That's staff's opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
I just wanted to respond to a comment by Commissioner Levis on this kind of notion of this should be done through acquisition as opposed to by an amortization period. of this should be done through acquisition as opposed to by an amortization period. And I think there is a, to some extent, there's a philosophical, you know, I think you're on one side if you think government regulation should, whenever it affects the value of a business, you should somehow compensate that versus, you know, having a range of tools to address your different planning objectives without having to all the time go to the bank and write a check for the impact that you're having on a neighborhood, a business, or whatever. And we make a lot of decisions here that impact negatively people's values, and we don't, we don't run to the bank every time to pay them. So it's kind of a question of which ones do you think are deserving of that particular kind of treatment versus which ones that are not? And I don't know if there's, if, for staff, if there's some kind of, you know, way to think about that issue and general planning approaches that address this question, I think is a legitimate one, that talks about when is it appropriate to, for example, with the train trench, proceed through eminent domain? And when, aside from the fact that you've been directed by council to do this particular thing, so your hands are somewhat tied, is it, you know, is there, is there a legitimate planning distinction between, you know, the types of approaches that should be undertaken with the public fisc versus those that should be, you know, that we can look to other kind of creative ways of providing an amortization period, which essentially says, we're giving you additional opportunity to make money off of your business, but then no more? And that, you know, I think there is a, somehow, hopefully, there is some way to talk about that issue without going into our respective corners on approach.
Yeah, and I'd agree with you that the city, I'm maybe saying the city needs to write the check, but somebody's writing a check, whether it's the city or it's the business owner. They went where we collectively, the city, wanted them to go 20, 25 years ago. They moved out there and they invested. These were other, it used to be the Ice House, I remember going there, and there was another nightclub there, too. They went where, I think this probably came up, I don't remember the exact history, but I do remember that it came up 20, 25 years ago. They went where the city wanted them, they invested where the city wanted them. Now the city's changing the rules again. So who gets to write the check this time is the question. Should the city write the check? Should the business owners write the check? And I'm not saying that the city has to write the check, but they followed the rules at the time. So they put in their business, picked a business, I gave the batch plan as an example. You could go along all kinds of different businesses, they went in where the rules were okay and where we wanted them at the time, and now we're changing the rules, who should write the check is the question.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. A few months ago, we looked at several projects as the master plan was coming up in front of everybody, and three different property owners came in front of us and wanted to maintain their existing zoning, if we all recall that. It's just what we're talking about right now. I mean, you know, we allowed those, two out of three got to keep their zoning, one happened not to, but it's no different than what we're doing now. We're changing in the middle of the game, and those people came forward to us asking us if we could keep their property zoned the way it is at that time, something like mixed use or whatever. And we allowed two out of three to do that, but here, they don't get a say. Okay? So what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
If there's no other feedback, I would just make the comment that the issues that we're dealing with tonight, from my reading of planning literature over the last several years, is nothing new, that there's a lot of, you know, evidence and supporting materials that staff can rely on, and our feedback tonight just provides a little bit more for them to think about, specific to our jurisdiction. So I appreciate the discussion, and I think we'll turn it over to staff to take it from there, take it back to city council, and we'll look forward to seeing it again in about a month.
We will be back here, actually, before we go back to city council. We're going to go through the business impact statement on the other three portions of RMC, and then we'll bring this forward back to you with maybe a couple tweaks of the ordinance, and we'll bring it back for a final decision.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a quick question of Claudia, please?
Please.
Claudia, should we keep the half a tree that's been killed and given to us tonight, or will you be producing all new documents?
I recommend you keep it for now, in case you have questions or discussions over the next month. I want you to take this month to look at this and become familiar with it, the issues. If you have questions, please let me know. We do, we will need to recreate the packet, just for public record. Thank you.
Appreciate the discussion. So we move on, on our agenda then, to item eight, Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. I don't have anything to report, other than we have a meeting coming up in the new year, but not until then. We skipped staff announcements, so that brings us down to Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Let me say, we didn't skip staff announcements, we moved it to earlier in the agenda, so that was covered. So we covered it. Back to item 10, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll move down to Public Comment. This item's for either Public Comment on any action item or for any general public comment, or open public comment. Michelle, do you have any request to speak forms on this one?
No, I do not.
Not seen anyone rush forward?
Can I make a public comment?
You certainly can.
I need you to fill out a new card when you're done, okay?
Need a new card for this item? Yeah, make the comment first. William, state your name again for the record.
My name's William Mantle. Thank you. That was some lovely discussion, I'd like to say. I really like seeing the diversity of opinions and expressions here, and I think everyone made some really valid and important points. I think that particularly, Mr. Olivas, you hit on a matter that I tried to explain, and I think, can I ask for a point of information? Is that allowed at this point? Can I do that?
We can't really engage in a conversation.
Okay. Well, I'm curious on how many letters were received in opposition. I didn't see that on the presentation. I saw in, or for, but not against, so I'd be curious about that, because if it's one, then I think I was the only one who wrote a letter, which I explained further, in my opinion. But you asked a question, Mr. Chairperson, about the effects of before and after alcohol drinking. I wrote a professional paper back in 2013 on alcohol usage at sporting events, which so happened, I think, to mimic maybe more of the essence of what you were looking for, in that there is plenty of evidence that shows a strong correlation between active sporting events and extreme binge drinking right before a sporting event occurs. And I think every single home football game, we see plenty of evidence of increased DUIs, increased rowdiness, battery assaults, littering, public indecency, et cetera. So there is plenty of evidence, and whether that can be put towards strip clubs, if things were to change and alcohol removed from the present, from the property, I don't know, but there is evidence of something maybe similar. I'd like to bring up that Portland, Oregon is the strip club capital of America, I'm not sure how many of you knew that. There are 54 strip clubs in Portland, Oregon, with a population of about 610,000, which means there's one strip club for every about 11,300 people. I think Reno has seven strip clubs, and we have 300,000-ish population. So we're talking that Portland, Oregon has a factor of more than seven times the number of strip clubs, and I would be curious to know how their zoning, the criminal body that they're seeing near their strip clubs, seeing as that they have so many per capita. I mean, we have one per 50,000, they have one per 11,000. I think that's something to look at and be very curious about. I am also a sexual assault victim's advocate, professional and trained for two and a half years now, and I can say that in my time doing so, I only ever tended to the needs of one individual working in an adult industry, and I can say that their offense was in no way related to their employment, they were walking home after they got off on their shift. I haven't heard directly or indirectly any complaints about those places, maybe I wouldn't, though. However, I do believe that individuals do inappropriate things in those places, too, and I don't want to discount that. Just from a professional standpoint, I haven't heard anything towards sexual assault.
Okay. Thanks for those comments.
Wait, I need you to fill out a card.
So we're going to close public comment, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Good night. Happy holidays, everyone.